That is, these are the big construction projects and renovation projects that will happen in town. That'll total about $3.1 million. I think you're going to see a little friction or pushback from new selectmen Bob Joyce and perhaps Ellen Askenberg, who have been a little resistant to that kind of expenditure. We'll have to see. It was certainly one of the things that Bob Joyce campaigned on, was capital expenditures. But there will be also quite a number of other smaller articles on the warrant. We'll hear from the Conservation Preservation Committee, who always comes to this meeting with some suggestions for spending money that have been collected, and there are several articles on the warrant for that. And of course, we'll also be keeping an eye on John Curlin, our new moderator, who's taking the helm from Richard DeFradis, Dick DeFradis. And that was a contested election, as you recall, back just last month. Here we are just a few weeks later, and the whole place has a somewhat different feel. John has handled himself ably the first night, and we'll see how that goes tonight. It could get pretty contentious. The sewer grinder pump issue has been festering for quite a while now here in the town. The core issue, as you might know, is that when the sewer was installed throughout town, there were certain residences that were too far below grade to have gravity take their sewage into the main system. So those homes had grinder pumps installed. These both grind up the sewage and also pump it uphill. The problem is that while the, after the initial installation, the maintenance of those pumps was left with the citizens. And apparently, they give out quite more frequently and are more expensive to replace. And a number of them have banded together to try to convince the town to take over the responsibility for the maintenance and replacement of those grinder pumps. And we're going to see that come tonight. And so with that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to the, to the town meeting representatives. I want to mention, it's a beautiful evening here in North Chelmsford. The rains have given way to true spring-like conditions. And maybe that's a metaphor for what we're going to see tonight. Maybe the rains of the budget debate from Monday night will make everything sweetness and light tonight. We'll have to just see about that. So stay tuned, and we'll be back with you in just a minute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Again, I have to announce where the fire exits are. They haven't moved since last meeting, but they're along the sides. There's two on each side and one at the rear. Also, would you please turn off your cell phones and all electronic devices? Are we all set, Ted? So, right now, we're going to test our electronic devices. So, again, if you would vote for the quorum. Left 35 seconds.
As you might know, we've been using a electronic voting system for the last year or so here at Town Meeting, and it's worked very, very well. Not only does it make the vote-taking a lot quicker, but it has the sort of side benefit of showing you who is voting which way and who might not be here. Always a little bit interesting to see that develop. So, as always, we test the electronic devices. This is not an actual vote.
I declare that we have a quorum.
This is just to make sure that everyone is in contact with the central receiver.
On each table are some suggestions from Chelmsford Telemedia as to the most efficacious way of using microphones. So if, you know, if you feel at all uncomfortable in front of a microphone, you may want to just take a look at that for some handy tips. It is always enjoyable when a town meeting rep is recognized for one reason or another. And we have that occasion this evening, so I'd like to briefly turn the meeting over to the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Chairman Wojcik, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and I want to make this announcement from this location so everybody notices and is aware of who it is that we're honoring tonight. We have a person who will be leaving the employment of the Town of Chelmsford in four business days, someone who's been with the town for over 25 years. And that means that this person has worked with almost 30 different members of the Board of Selectmen. And I think I can speak for just about all of those members in indicating that she definitely has made our lives so much easier. So I would like to read a proclamation, a citation, from the Massachusetts Senate and the Massachusetts House of Representatives for Marion Courier, in case you didn't get it. This is an official citation. Be it known that the Massachusetts Senate and the House hereby extends its congratulations to Marion Courier in recognition of your extraordinary contribution to the Town of Chelmsford from your 24, from your 25 years of dedicated work in the Town Manager's office to your service as a Town Meeting Representative. And be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate and House extends their best wishes for continued success. That these citations be duly signed by the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House and attests to and a copy transmitted to the Clerk of the Senate and the House, signed by Michael Barrett, State Senator, Thomas Golden, Corey Atkins, James Arcero, and David Nangle, our state representatives. And Marion, if you could come up here and receive these.
Marion Courier, of course, a longtime fixture at Town Hall, has been the liaison for the Board of Selectmen as many, many years, 25 years. Wonderful recognition as she prepares to leave Town Hall and begin her life with a lot less stress, I'm sure. A standing ovation here from the Town Meeting Reps and the assembled guests and the boards in front.
Now, the MARCOM Committee had recommended that if there is a warrant article that has considerable community interest in which a large number of the general public would be showing up, that we try to advance that. And Article 25, the grinder pump article, is such an article. I am a grinder pump owner, so in the spirit of full disclosure, I, in an effort to make sure that there is no question as to the impartiality of the process, I am going to recuse myself for this article. I can appoint a temporary moderator, and I have enlisted the support of Michael McCall, a former selectman and chairman of the MARCOM Committee, to serve in my stead. And I'd like Mr. McCall to come up. He will be sworn in, and he will conduct this warrant article.
So there's Town Clerk Honor Miloney, excuse me, swearing in Michael McCall as temporary moderator. And this means that the Article Number 25, having to do with this grinder pump issue, will be moved forward to this point in the program.
I have a motion under Article 25 relative to the grinder pump study. Is the proponent of the article here? You come forward to the podium at this time. So I would request a motion to take Article 25 out of order. Do I have a motion? Second. By a show of hands, all in favor? Chair, Moderator recognizes majority. You could just state your name, sir, and your address.
My name is David Foley, Town Meeting Rep, Precinct 5, and a member of the Grinder Pump Study Committee. And I'm here tonight with Tom Gilroy, who is the head... Okay, can't hear. Okay. Yes, I'm here tonight with Tom Gilroy, the head of the committee, to present the findings and recommendations of the committee, and also to present Article 25 for your consideration. Now, I'd like to present the findings and recommendations of the committee before entering the article, for your consideration, because the article really is a result of the findings and recommendations of the committee, and it will be far more understandable to understand that when you see the findings and recommendations from the committee. So I'd like to introduce Tom Gilroy for that purpose.
Thank you, Dave, Mr. Moderator, members of the Board of Selectmen, members of the School Committee and the Finance Committee, Town Meeting Representatives, and citizens of Chelmsford. The Grinder Pump Study Committee, as you all know, was a result of the Fall Town Meeting. They determined that more information was necessary, and in order to do that, they selected one member from the Finance Committee, one member from the Engineering Department of the DPW, one member from the Board of Selectmen as a liaison, some members of the Sewer Fairness Alliance, and some citizens of Chelmsford. Those members were myself, Bob Chevalier, Steve Janley, Dan Burke, Peggy Dunn, Glenn Cole, George Dixon, the Selectmen Liaison, Curtis Barton, Dave Foley, Ed Safran, and we had the able assistance of Joyce Coty as our secretary. We met weekly, okay, from December 3 until April 2. And there was some pretty miserable weather during that period, and we tried to meet. Every Tuesday, we were, a couple of weeks, we had to call it off, but we got through it. All of our meetings were televised, most of them live on Chelmsford Telemedia. And we collected valuable inputs from the Sewer Fairness Alliance, the Town Manager, Finance Director, Town Council, Weston and Sampson, DPW Director, Sewer Department Superintendent, Public Health Director, FR Mahoney, E1 Systems, and anyone from the general public, mostly grinder pump owners, for their testimony. The mission statement of the Board of, of the Grinder Pump Study Committee was directed by Fall Town Meeting. And we were to conduct a thorough investigation into the impact of proposed Article 18 upon the town and all residents into the future. The substance of this article is as follows. Investigate the impact of the proposed article upon the town and all its residents now into the future. Conduct an inquiry into the feasibility of all methods and manners of implementing the proposed bylaw change. Establish full cost, present and future. Determine the exposure of all risks and liabilities. Report all findings and make recommendations to all residents of the town for their consideration prior to any submission to Town Meeting, and report the findings at the April Town The findings were to consider only duplex and single-family household residences comprised of approximately 11,500 dwellings. Analyze 47% of the 525, which is now 539, residences with grinder pumps, which is about 4.6% of the total dwellings in town. Collected data and information from all the areas of concern. The Sewer Fairness Alliance as a group, a group of grinder pump owners, were formed in November of 2012. They received testimonials from 33 grinder pump owners. And might I add, that of the 247 owners that were members of the Sewer Fairness Alliance, those were the owners that they were able to contact. It was quite a task to try to contact all the owners of the grinder pumps in town. We eventually did get a list of them all, but some people did not respond, did not respond to the Sewer Fairness Alliance questionnaire that was sent out. We received testimonials from those 33 grinder pump owners. Sewering of the town was in multiple phases. The first phase was 68%, and there were 80 grinder pumps in that first phase. And for those of you who don't remember, and probably many don't, the first, the first article that referenced searing of the town was back in 1976. And Peggy Dunn can tell you every single article that referenced grinder pumps since then. Sewering is mandatory for 100% of the town with one year of the sewer line passing your property. Implementation of the last 32% yielded over 500 grinder pumps due to cost considerations. Mitigation was available to residents. A dollar, a dollar per pump rebated construction and betterment fees. The town records indicate $2.7 million was spent for mitigation of the installations. Just another note, back in 1996, the Sewer Commission passed what was called the Sewer Neutrality, I mean, the Sewer Neutrality. And what they did with that was they wanted to make sure that there was equality of payment. In other words, the grinder pump owners would pay no more for the insulation and for their betterment than would the gravity pump users. And that was why there was, there was differences in the numbers, but that was the reason it was done. Residents were forced to comply with connection to searing even when current subsurface septic systems were operating properly. Many other municipalities, such as Adlebar and Burica, do not require hookup to town searing prior to failure or at least Title V inspection of existing private systems. Some municipalities, such as Amesbury, Gloucester, and Marion, pay all the expenses for repairs, maintenance, and replacement of grinder pumps. In order to complete the final phase of searing of the town, the last 38% found dramatic increase in costs for materials and labor with very little government-assisted bond monies available. The Sewer Commission determined many outlying areas of the town be less expensive to use grinder pumps versus gravity-fed systems with large pumping stations. Implementation of the original grinder pump installations and information to the town homeowners were inadequate. Feasibility that the committee concluded the town was capable of carrying out responsibility for the maintenance, repair, and replacement of the grinder pumps through a third-party bidding process. We had a town sewer department cost evaluation at that time, which is estimated at $289,000 for the first year of full service by the town. FR Mahoney, however, presented historical data that the average cost per year over the past 13 years to be $50 to $75 per pump per household. This cost, however, did not include replacement pumps at about $3,200 each. The Sewer Fairness Alliance, and the committee, I might add, developed the annual cost for maintenance, repair, and replacement of the pumps to be conservatively $140,000 annually. When that was, when the prevailing wage was added to that, the prevailing wage being about $50 per hour for this particular job, the number that we came up with was $150,000 annually. The annual cost to residents, okay, for that, for those particular numbers are $1,250 for $140,000, would be $13 for $150,000, or $25 for $280,000, which was the number above. This cost should be an assessment credited to the Sewer Enterprise Fund. The committee voted eight yes, zero no, one abstention, a majority to support the motion, amendment, and recommendation to Board of Selectmen to the town. Agreed that the town provide assistance with grinder pump repair and maintenance. Town goes out to bid to a reliable contractor to take over repair and maintenance of the grinder pumps. And there was a motion to add "replace" to that, so "replace" goes in there as well. The recommendation shall only affect single-family or duplex-family residences. The Board of Selectmen, through the Town Manager, shall direct the DPW and the Sewer Department to implement the following program to all existing residences noted above with grinder pumps throughout the town. Okay, at that point, I would be glad to entertain any questions you may have. Oh, there's another one up there? I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't see the last one. What shall develop a policy to enact the following. Institute a plan to evaluate all grinder pumps as to their working condition, place in the hands of the homeowner a detailed set of documents, and manufacture a brochure for the proper operation and maintenance of the pump. Designate a sewer department employee for residents to call when in need of assistance. And the town shall not be responsible for any piping, installations, or repairs from either the side of the grinder pump, and shall not cover any repairs to the grinder pump caused by the homeowner.
This time, I would ask that the main motion come back up on the screen, and I would also ask if Mr. Gilroy or Mr. Foley could explain. The motion that's going to be up this evening is not the same that is printed in your books. I understand there's a friendly motion, and I would ask the proponents to explain that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have some prepared remarks that I will read for this. My name is David Foley, and I am a Town Meeting Representative from Precinct 5 and one of the nine members of the Grinder Pump Study Committee, whose finding and recommendations you have just received. On April 7, the Board of Selectmen received these same findings and recommendations and acted on them by endorsing Article 25 as an implementation of these recommendations and a resolution of the grinder pump issue, which has been with the town for the last 15 years. I will now introduce Article 25 amended in order to bring it into alignment with the recommendations of the Grinder Pump Committee and the recommendations of the Chelmsford DPW. So by way of explanation, this article was actually introduced onto the warrant in January 6, even before the Grinder Pump Committee had began. So this article, as it's worded, is really a placeholder and was really simply worded in the same manner as Article 18 from the fall because of the early date at which it would have to be submitted. So for that reason, it really requires amendments to bring it into alignment with all of the findings and recommendations that we have incorporated. Okay. Now, the first one I would like to point out. Yes, the first one I'd point out. It's because the Grinder Pump Committee limited our work to single and duplex residences, this article is amended to only apply to single and duplex residences. And that's, that's one of the changes you'll see. Because it's, the way it's worded, it would say that units of four or more would be excluded, but it's now reworded to say units of three or more would be excluded. And that is the same as saying that it applies to single and duplex residences. Second, secondly, the DPW has recommended against possible interpretations of the article, which would require the town to treat the grinder pumps in an identical manner to town pump stations, which would potentially require purchase of items like electrical backup generators or telemetry equipment or other considerable expenses, which are not the intention of the article. So this article is also amended to remove these interpretations. So I'll just read through this. So in paragraph 2 of the article, it now reads, "Each owner and applicant shall apply for a permit and shall be responsible for all the costs related to the connection to the town sewer system." And all that really says is, is that if you're going to tie into the sewer with a grinder pump, that you're responsible to buy the grinder pump, install the grinder pump, and pay for all of the plumbing or the drain which has to be laid between the pump and the town. That's identical to anybody who would install a gravity sewer connection. And there are some words after that fact that have been deleted because they're not necessary in this context. And then in paragraph 3, which is the portion in the middle, it reads now in the following way. Both existing and new residential grinder pumps and the associated appurtenances and controls installed shall be maintained, serviced, and replaced by the Town of Chelmsford as integral components of the town's wastewater collection system, respecting that while a pump is inoperable, the homeowner is without sanitary facilities. So once again, this really addresses the same issue of whether or not the pumps would be treated on exactly the same as a town pump station. The grinder pumps, as was essentially learned in the committee proceedings, are one of the three types of pumps that we have in Chelmsford. We have custom pump houses, which deliver the main bulk of the sewage to the Lowell Wastewater Treatment Facility. We have pumps, more local pump stations, packaged pump stations, and then the smaller set of pumps would be the grinder pumps. Each of these... Each of these is an integral part of the system, but each of them is a uniquely different set of hardware which requires different considerations. But all of these pumps are unique in the sense that if any of these pumps is inoperable, then there are residents of the town who would be without sanitary facilities, which is, of course, against the interests of the town. So those are the amendments for which the article has been amended. I guess it's more readable now.
It's better right there.
Okay. Yellow is better.
Something like that. What you're trying to say is...
Yes. Okay, and then there's actually, okay, to the next page, if we could go to the next page? And there was one additional change. Oh, I'm sorry, this is, yeah, this is the original amendment now. This is, okay, here we go. Yes, and this is the list of the so-called prohibited items. So when the grinder pump is delivered to a household from E1, the owner may receive a manual which has in it a list of items that are prohibited to be used with a grinder pump. Generally, they'll cause damage to the grinder pump. So this is simply a matter to include this list, so all of the items on this brochure are included. And in this particular case, that calls for the inclusion of seafood shells and kitty litter. Of course, these are not very common items, but this makes, this simply makes the list more complete. Okay? And those are, those are the amendments to Article Twenty-Five. So I will continue with the introduction of the article. "The proceedings of the Grinder Pump Committee were open to the public, and there, and the chair solicited input from all quarters to provide testimony to the committee. All viewpoints were considered and incorporated into the findings and recommendations. The proceedings were broadcast live and rebroadcast and made available by Chelmsford Telemedia online. I would like to thank this body for creating this committee, several members who attended several meetings in person, and especially two of our selectmen who attended every or nearly every meeting of the committee. I would like to thank Chelmsford DPW for preparing the committee's final report for online access, so all of their representatives are able to review that. As mentioned in Tom Gilroy's presentation, an important finding of the Grinder Pump Committee is that in all of the towns that we surveyed that do not maintain the pumps, Chelmsford is the only town which forced the homeowners to tie in with a grinder pump. And another way of looking at that same comparative data is to say that of all the towns that did mandate a tie-in with a grinder pump, Chelmsford is the only town which does not maintain the pumps. In this sense, it is a standout. Being forced to tie in with a grinder pump without a maintenance program is not reasonable, and it is without precedent. And I respectfully submit Article Twenty-Five for your consideration as a resolution of the grinder pump issue, which is now before the town." And with that, I will present the article before you.
Before we begin question and answer, I just want to point out, I've consulted with town council. We do not need a motion to amend, as this is a substituted main motion, so there is no need for a motion to amend. And I also wanted to clarify, Mr. Foley, and correct me if I'm wrong, there are no changes to the first paragraph of the article as printed, just paragraphs two and three and one addition to paragraph three A.
That is correct.
And it may be worthwhile, thank you for keeping that up. At this point, we would now enter into the question and answer period. Again, I remind you, we're to be eliciting factual information at this point. Mr. Lane?
Mr. Moderator, Jim Lane, Precinct Seven, just a point of clarification for you. The article that we're voting on, is it the exact language that's printed in our books? Or is there an amended document somewhere available that we can read?
What you see on the screen is the substituted main motion, so it is what was originally in your book. The petitioner has amended it, and my understanding from town council, it is a substituted main motion, and it does not require a motion to amend.
Mr. Moderator, in all due respect, that language is not readable to everyone in the room, and it should be.
Well, they tried, I think.
Duly noted, Mr. Lane, I'll see what I can do about getting the colors changed. I know they dimmed the lights, but at this...
Mr. Moderator, a point of, a point of order or request, if possible, I'm wondering if you might be able to ask the body to be patient for a couple of minutes and ask the folks to update the screen, eliminate the back, the green background, keep the main motion in black, make your changes in red, and allow them the opportunity to look at it. I would suspect that would take about five minutes to do. And make the text slightly larger, please.
If you indulge me for one moment, I will see what we can do.
I know, but there's so many copies that require... So those of you at home can probably see that the, what you're seeing on your screen is in fact very difficult to read, it was even more so before they changed the fonts. This is important because this motion was brought up at the fall town meeting and was effectively tabled, not tabled or just passed over, with the assumption that this Grinder Pump Study Committee would be formed, its recommendations would be brought forward here at this town meeting, and we would get a new article that would embody their recommendations. And when I say their recommendations, it's not just the citizens involved, but you saw, it involves the DPW and the manufacturer of the grinder pump and, and the town manager of the Board of Selectmen. Everyone has bought into this set of recommendations. And so in that sense, the recommendations will probably be very well-received, the sense, last fall, for those of you who were watching, is that the town meeting representatives were very sympathetic to this situation and wanted to see a resolution, but they didn't want it to be done in a way that was...
Just going to wait till they have that finished.
Passed too quickly, or the thinking incomplete. And in fact, that article, Article Eighteen from the fall town meeting would have, for example, required the town to maintain the grinder pumps for condominium complexes, some of which actually have grinder pumps. So here we are, the problem is really just one of mechanics with the electronic presentation. The, the, the books that we get, these books, the ones put out by the finance group, you look like this.
Mr. Moderator, can we start questions? So some of them may not pertain specifically to the boarding.
All right. All right. Based on the request from Ms. Carter, while they're working on the technological aspects of this, we could start with the question and answer. I recognize Ms. Carter.
Sue Carter, Precinct Five. I have a couple of questions. As I read the article, it says any new connections would only pay the same as they would if they were going gravity. What about the people who already got breaks on their connections? When I read your report, they said some people had essentially a break on the cost for the, not only the pump, but also up to $6,000 on the betterment. I just paid $6,000 for a betterment for me to tie in. Are people going to have to pay it retroactively in order to buy into it?
No, no retroactive payments, no.
So it's only for new connections with a grinder pump? And how many do we expect to see in the future? I thought we were 100% sewored.
The town is 100% sewored. There could be some additional building in town. Any additional building in town, the pump will be the responsibility of the builder. At that time, the town will take over the responsibility of the maintenance, but they're responsible for it, for new buildings. That was the intention. And there'll be no rebates of betterments.
Okay, so, and then another question I have is, if you were to have a grinder pump in your house, and you called the sewer department and said, "It's not working," and sewer department is, was delayed in getting to your house, and the sewage backed up in your basement, and you had damage, say, to your carpeting in a finished room, is the town liable for covering for a backup and any damages incurred if, if the homeowner views the town not responding quickly enough?
Well, I think there's, you have to look at this both ways. Say you look, say you're on a gravity system, and maybe you're on the beginning or the end of the line, and the, and the, and the pump station goes down. Generator does not operate, okay, for one particular reason or not. You have the same situation there where you could get sewage backing up into your house as well. Is the town liable? I, I think that there's a, there's a possibility of litigation there, but there's been instances already where people have had sewage back up into their homes.
The reason why I'm asking the question is I think there's a higher probability of, if you have a pump failure, of having back up into your basement than you would if you're at the bottom of the line and a major pump station goes out because of all the extras...
Oh, I understand, yes.
...precautions. So I'm just trying to get an idea of exactly what liabilities the town may be incurring in the future if they take over the pumps, because I, my, one of the concerns is timing. Is the town going to have to respond within X number of hours, or the town will be liable for any damages?
It isn't the town that's responding, it's going to be the, the vendor who gets the contract is going to be responding.
Okay.
And the contract should read that they will respond within a certain period of time.
Okay, and the other question I have for you, there's a great list of things that you're not supposed to put down, your, your, if a pump fails, who determines who's at fault for the failure of the pump? And if the homeowner or the town disagrees with it, what is the appeal process?
If, it's a, it's a, if there's a litigation, the homeowner is responsible. The homeowner is responsible to pay for litigation. The, the vendor makes the determination if it's the homeowner's fault. The only things that's supposed to go down, any sewer, grinder pump included, is white water, gray water, sewage, and toilet paper, nothing else.
I'm an engineer, I'm aware of that.
Nothing else.
Okay.
And if it doesn't, it fouls up the grinder pump, it's the, it's the homeowner's responsibility.
Okay, thank you.
Before I take the next speaker, I think it might be prudent to consult with town council. I anticipate that the liability issue would come up, and I think, Ms. Carter, town council may be able to address part of your question.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, this, this issue has come up ever since the, the issue of adoption of this bylaw has been in, in discussion. And the, as a general proposition, when the town operates a utility such as a sewer system, it is liable for any damage that occurs to a private resident or a user, assuming that that individual can demonstrate negligence on the part of the town. And so the assumption of the responsibility for maintaining, repairing, and replacing grinder pumps would, by necessity, create additional liability for the town. And as I explained, I believe, to the study committee when I met with them, one of the ways you protect against that liability as a town is that you have adequate general liability insurance, which of course the town has. How, one question that came up was, well, how does that change the premium payments for the town, and will you have to increase your insurance line item? And that really depends upon what your loss history is on this particular issue. It could potentially affect the town's, the cost of liability insurance going forward.
Mr. Wagner?
Will Wagner, Precinct Eight. So looking at the numbers that the committee came up with, they estimated about $3,200 to replace a, a, a single pump, but they only checked with less than half of the houses. So what happens if in the first year, eighty percent or 100 percent of the houses have to replace it? I come up with a, a figure of 1.7 million to replace those pumps.
Well, obviously, that is, that is worse than a worst-case scenario, okay? The, the average age of the pumps in town, okay, would not indicate that you're going to have 100% failure. Some of them have only been installed in the past, you know, five to seven years. All right? So the, the way that we figured is that there would be so many pumps replaced every year based upon the age of the pumps in town. Okay? I mean, to have a catastrophic failure of every single pump in town, that's, you know, that's like getting hit with a, with an asteroid tonight. I think it's highly improbable.
Fine. The follow-up question is, since you only check with 50% or less than 50% of the houses, how, how do you come up with an estimate of exactly how many are going to need to be replaced immediately and then in following years? I mean, I assume...
Well, we know the ages of the pumps in the town. We know the ages of those that did not respond. Okay? So, I mean, the, the numbers should be basically the same when you're figuring out your, your mean time between failures and your mean time between replacements. It should be the same for all of them. You have, you have to take, you have to take that as a, as a given. You can't, I mean, it would be wonderful to have everybody respond, but they didn't. They didn't respond.
All right, I'll remind everybody, questions and answers should be going through the moderator and not direct exchange.
My final question right now, through you to the speaker. The estimates and all of the, the numbers were based on mitigation for the people who were given breaks or who were forced to tie in. Do we have any numbers on the percentage of houses who still have their original owners versus the percentage of houses who have gotten new owners and knew what they were getting into when they purchased the house?
Mr. Gilroy? We have a listing which indicates if the, if the, if the current owner was the original owner or not. Okay, we, we have that, we have that information. But the, and the information that we received was, was from those who responded to the, to the questionnaire.
And so what was the percentage of the people who have, who are the original owners versus those who bought in knowing what they were getting into?
Mr. Gilroy? I get that information?
Yeah. Mr. Mo, to, to the previous speaker through the moderator, 135 of the houses do not have the original owner. That's tw, about 25% have turned over.
Thank you. Ms. Myers?
Laurie Myers, Precinct Six. Mr. Moderator, through you to the speaker. So the charter, the, this commission, this, this committee's charter was to conduct a thorough investigation into the impact of the proposed Article Eighteen. Can you tell me what exactly was done to contact all 539 grinder pump owners?
What did I tell you this afternoon with your email?
Well, I think the rest of the town meeting should know.
The, the, the people that were contacted were contacted by the Sewer Fairness Alliance. Of the 535 members that they, they contacted, 235 responded.
So in what way were they...
That was the information that we used.
What, in what way were they contacted? Via US mail, email, letters?
Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker, or the other, to the previous speaker through the moderator, the means of contact for the SFA was probably many and varied. There were newspaper advertisements of meetings in which people would sign up. People who signed up went onto an email list, they might have included their, certainly their address and the telephone number. And then there were also various media releases in various media outlets such as social media, basically to try to get all the grinder pump owners who were interested in this issue to become part of the Sewer Fairness Alliance. And that's how that membership list was compiled. At the time that that was compiled, the actual addresses of grinder pump owners was completely unknown. And it wasn't only through extensive work by DPW in going through over 11,500 individual case files to determine which houses actually had a grinder pump and which houses did not. That took several months, so that it wasn't actually practical to contact everybody in advance, even if your intention was to do that. So mostly, we relied on public awareness, and of course, as a result, there are a certain number of people who don't respond to the newspaper and issues like that, and that really explains why there was, you know, 100 or 200 people that simply, you know, had other things to do, basically.
Okay, so just so I understand this correctly, and everyone else does, there wasn't any mailing or anything directly from the, from the committee to the 539 individuals?
It was not.
Thank you.
And also, by the way, that list was not made available to us until at least halfway through our meetings, that we have a total list of all of the people that had grinder pumps in town.
Okay, thank you for your work on this, it's appreciated.
Mr. Moderator, Richard Grove, Precinct Three. The presentation indicated that the first-year cost would be substantially more than the 140,000 a year average run cost. I think that number was from the town sewer department. Are those numbers consistent with what the committee found, or why is the first-year cost so much larger? Are there a lot of pumps that need to be replaced?
Excuse me, I don't, I can't understand what you're saying, sir. Would you move up closer to the microphone?
If you could please repeat the question.
What cost, the future cost, did you say?
The first-year cost was close... The first-year cost was quoted or estimated by the Town Sewer Department to be much larger.
Yes.
Does that reflect a large number of pumps that it's anticipated will have to be replaced in the first year?
I frankly don't know what it all includes, sir. I don't know.
Okay. The other question I had was, the presentation indicated that if the prevailing wage law applied, it would double the cost. And my question to the committee or perhaps town council is, does the prevailing wage law apply?
Yes, it does. The prevailing wage law does apply. And as a matter of fact, we did apply the prevailing wage law. And if you heard my presentation, I said that the number went from 140 to 150.
The presentation said it could go from 140 to twice as much, 280.
Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker through the moderator. What that really means is, and there's probably just a typo in the presentation, the prevailing wage is probably more like double what the current wage is for the grinder pump technicians who do the work. But the actual cost of the maintenance program is dominated by the replacement components, the pump itself at $2,000. So the distinction is that if prevailing wage applied, the hourly wage of the work could easily double. That's certainly true. But the cost of the program, only about 1/15 or 8% is actually going to the hourly wage of the employees. So it's not, so the increase in the overall program is modest, even with the prevailing wage adjustment.
Okay, thank you very much.
Now, I want to remind everyone, questions go through the moderator. And when somebody's asking a question or answering, I don't want anybody asking questions over, answering over the questions so that we can have a civil discourse.
Joey Ann Anderson, Precinct 6, through you to the speaker. I have a question. I was wondering about the towns that you gave examples of that currently pay all the expenses for the grinder pumps. How many grinder pumps do each of these towns, or do you have this information? How many pumps does each of these towns have? And do you have how much the towns put aside to care for these pumps each year? I know they're not exactly the same as Chelmsford, size-wise.
Yeah, I can handle that. Do you have any numbers? Yeah, I got the numbers. Mr. To the previous speaker through the moderator. So for a few examples of the towns who do provide those programs, one good example would be Marion, Massachusetts, who has approximately 450. It's a very similar number to Chelmsford. And it's the same hardware, E1 pumps. And their costs are very similar to the estimates that we have here in Chelmsford because, aside from the survey data, which was used by the committee to calculate the cost, as you saw in Tom's presentation, there was also data provided by F.R. Mahoney, which is an independent source of the cost, because they were the ones servicing the pumps. They had all the receipts for the work. The homeowners also had receipts for the work. And the presentation from F.R. Mahoney basically tells you how much it costs to maintain an E1 pump. And that's exactly the pump that they have in Marion, Mass. So those charges apply almost directly. Now, in Gloucester, Mass., where they also have a maintained program, they have about a similar number, about 400 total pumps. But about half of those pumps are E1 pumps, and they have another half that are a different type of pump. So that's a slightly different situation. And also, those pumps are maintained in a slightly different program where they have a more managed program, where they have an intermediary. Woodward and Curran is an engineering firm which actually handles all of the work on those pumps. So they probably pay a higher cost because they have that, they're unburdened from the management of the program, and it's done completely separately by a third party. And another town would be Amesbury. I think that's on the list. They have a relatively small number of pumps. It's really only, less than 100. It's only the pumps that surround one single lake. But those are also E1 pumps, and those prices are also very compatible with what we have because it's the same hardware, and they have the same failure rate and lifetime expectancy.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. Tricia Duris, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, through you to the presenter. I was doing a little light reading after work. I've got your report right here. And I was looking for something specific, and I didn't see it in here. So I'm just curious, did the Grinder Pump Study Committee look at and collect all of the contracts that were signed by all the people that received the grinder pump from the town? I didn't see any copies of the contract in here. And from what I understand, I thought they all signed one? And did you get a copy of that contract and add it to your presentation?
Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker through the moderator. But I think what you might be referring to is the receipt of the pump, the $1. In other words, the homeowner had to sign a receipt of the pump to indicate that they had purchased the pump for $1. And that might be considered to be a contract, but-
And there was also a comment in there that I was looking for, because I understood that that contract stated that they agreed to maintain that pump when they signed that and received that pump. And I didn't see a copy of that contract in this report. So did the committee get copies of those contracts?
I believe that that might not be in the report. I believe the, one of the grinder pump policies for the years after 2008 would have indicated that the homeowner would maintain that pump. And, but as far as I know, there was no signature that went along with that particular thing. So I don't think you will find that in that report, because this report does not contain every document that pertains to the Sewer Commission.
There's a lot of good information in here. Oh, sorry to interrupt.
There were grinder pump policies that were published by the Sewer Commission.
Yeah.
And there are excerpts of those policies in that report, but not the complete, not that complete. What you're looking for is not in that report.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I'll bring up my other comments during debate. Thank you very much.
Mr. Doolan?
Leonard Doolan, Precinct 7. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to whomever can answer the question. Who made the decision that there would be no reciprocity in the $2,700,000 that each of these people received as a class?
Mr. Foley and Mr. Gilroy?
To the previous speaker through the moderator. And could you just elaborate what you mean by the term reciprocity?
It has been said that there's no reciprocity relative to repayment of the $2,700,000 that the owners of the 525, approximately-
Okay, I understand your question.
Who made that decision?
Well, I understand your question, and I think I can provide a response. Of that 2.7 million, that is divided up over 500 pumps, and it comes out to about $5,000 per pump. About 2,000 of that would have been in the category of assistance. That assistance was intended to offset the increased installation cost of the pumps, which is about $2,000. The remaining 3,000 covered the hardware of the pump itself. Now, the 500 pumps were used to provide the sewerin for Phase 4. Phase 4 provided sewerin for 3,500 households at a cost of $88.5 million, because that was the cost. The original budget for that project was $49 million, but with the overrun, it came out to 88.5 for an average cost of $25,000 per household. When a household is sewered with a low-pressure system, the total cost of that installation is about half of when it's done with a gravity system. The houses on a low-pressure system presented a cost to the town of about $12,000 to provide their sewer installation, while those on a gravity sewer in Phase 4 were a cost to the town of about $25,000. The fact that the town provided $3,000 for that pump would have increased the cost to the town for those installations up to about $15,000. The reason why the town provided those pumps was because that was the way to provide sewerin to those areas at a lower cost. And that was important in order to complete the project. That hardware was not actually a benefit to the homeowner. That was part of the sewer system's construction. And that's why, that's an explanation of really how that money is accounted for. And I hope that answers your question.
Mr. Moderator, I have heard the amount of money that was paid to the homeowners was mitigation for things that they were incurring in total. And I asked, who made that decision that it would not be retroactive? Who, is there, has to be a name or a group of names, or some people that take responsibility for saying that the town should not be reimbursed for something that they received that theoretically, if this article, this article is predicated upon fairness, correct?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Why is it not fair for there be fairness for the rest of the sewer holders to be compensated for the amount of money that the particular homeowners with sewer pumps have received?
Mr. Foley and Mr. Gilroy, if I could rephrase, are you looking, or is your question is whether the grinder pump owners would be paying back? Is that what you're looking to find out?
Yes. In other words, in other words, what they're trying to get to, if I may explain this to you, Mr. Moderator, is that they are trying to get to a situation that allows them to be in a state that's fair in comparison to the regular sewer holders, sewer owners who are on a gravity system pumps. They have received a benefit that was in mitigation of what was judged to be not fair. Now, I'm asking, who made the decision in that, in putting this thing together, that there would be no retroactivity? There's nothing that says anything about retroactivity in the, or lack of it, in the article.
To the previous speaker through the moderator. The investigation of the committee essentially showed that that money of which you spoke was either designed to offset the increased installation cost of the pump, or was part of the construction of the sewer system itself. And asking for that money back is like going to someone with a gravity sewer and asking them for an additional $10,000 because the town cost $10,000 more to dig to eight feet depth in front of their house in order to provide that service.
I don't want to debate that, but the point is, in digging eight feet, that got into the cost of the particular amount of money that they determined your betterment fee was.
We have a order, is this a, is this a-
Yeah.
So I'm asking, who made the decision? Who can we look to as responsible if we're concerned about who's benefiting from this fairness doctrine?
I understand your question, Mr. Doolan. Twice they've had the opportunity to answer it, and they haven't been able to give you an answer, so I guess we have to move on.
Then, then maybe there wasn't a decision.
Perhaps, but-
Is that correct?
They don't have an answer for you, Mr. Doolan. So I'm going to ask if we could go to the, do you have any other questions, Mr. Doolan?
Not at this point.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Bill Griffin, Precinct 9. First of all, thank you for the latitude of trying to adjust the article, and thank you to Ted, Trish, John, and for the lights and the attempt to change. For the sake of clarity, I'd just like to ask one more time, on, as far as Section 1 of the article, are there any changes? We've been looking at 2 and 3 here for a bit. There's no language change in Section 1, correct?
Paragraph 1 should be the same as what is in your printed materials.
Okay. And then the sentences that we saw in 2 and 3, and then the additional item under Section 3A, correct?
Yes, those are the only changes.
I appreciate the latitude. That was sort of a procedural request, if you will, through you to the speakers, if I could, please. I have some, I have a couple of questions with regard to the way the article is written now. During the slides, there was a discussion about contacts in time of need. My question is, I don't see any, there's no language present for that type of emergency contact. How is, how is that intended to be? And what is the, what is the scope of either the town or the vendor's responsibility for response times for our elderly residents, you know, in times of severe need?
Mr. Gilroy and Mr. Foley, can you respond?
To the previous speaker through the moderator. The recommendations of the study committee would have included many things which might have been considered implementation details, and therefore may not be appropriate for inclusion in the wording of the bylaw. And, for example, the contact person, I think is what you were referring to in this case. And in the case of Marion, Mass., where they have a program, a program which is similar to what is being proposed, the homeowner would contact the third-party vendor, F.R. Mahoney, directly. They wouldn't actually contact the sewer department, as stated here. But then F.R. Mahoney would contact the sewer department to let them know that they are going to be going into the town to prefer a repair, so the town DPW is informed. And so that didn't work its way into the bylaw, because the bylaw is intended to handle what, not the portion which is the implementation detail of the program, but that is the most significant core aspect of the program, which is simply to say that the town has the responsibility for the maintenance. How that actually gets implemented could be done in a variety of ways, and specifying that in the bylaw may not be a good idea.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. I apologize if the question was, wasn't clear. I wasn't, I wasn't seeking information on the implementation of a repair. Rather, I was trying to understand the implementation of an emergency response program in the event of power failures where large neighborhoods might need assistance, elderly might need assistance in a time of severe weather. That, that has, that has impact potentially to our town services. I'd like to understand why that's not part of this, that scope.
Okay. To the previous speaker through the moderator. So I now understand that you were talking about a power outage situation, which I did not understand when you first said that. And I apologize. Now, one aspect of this article and the work of the committee is that there are generally two parts to ownership of a pump. One is what happens when the power goes out, and the other one is what happens when the pump is broken. And the purpose of this article is to remedy only one portion of that, which is the repair of the pump. In the case of the power outage, this article says nothing about that. There's no requirement for the town to provide anything via this article. Now, there is already in place a emergency pump-down service, which has been in place since 1998, provided by the DPW. And that service was explained by DPW at one of the grinder pump committees. And they affirmed their support, and that program is very critical for a small number of homeowners that rely on that. Over half of the homeowners currently have their own generator in order to provide power for backup. So that was not one of the main objectives. So if you consider the burdens of a grinder pump owner, the objective here is to provide a sharing of the burden between the town and the homeowner, where the homeowner basically carries the burden of what to do when there is a power outage. And the basic answer to that is to buy a generator. And the town is to carry the burden of what is done when a pump needs to be repaired. It's essentially kind of a halving of the problem and dividing it in two.
Mr. Moderator, final follow-up, if I could, please, on that subject, and one more question on the article, and I'll be done. Will there, through you to the previous speaker, is it in the intention then at some point to bring an article forward to provide emergency services in the event of folks needing help with the generators and things like that?
To the previous speaker through the moderator, no. Because over half of the houses already have a generator, and about 20% of the houses have a standby automatic generator that turns on, these would be the houses which have a critical need for their facilities and generally include elderly or people with health problems. And it's anticipated, moving forward, that more and more houses which currently do not have a generator will acquire that generator when they receive enough funds in order to purchase that generator. This is a problem which is probably a problem which, over time, will go away. But there are a certain small set of critical people who will not be able to afford a generator, and they will, they will need that. There is no intention, it's not part of this article, and I cannot speak to the future, obviously, because, but there's no intention by, I have no intention to pursue any aspect relative to anything different for the power outage situation than what we currently have in town.
Mr. Moderator, very last, and I think this may be for council. I have a question as to the wording of Section 3A. It speaks to the items that shouldn't be disposed of. Would it not, if it's not explicitly stated, does that leave loopholes? Would it not be easier to state what should only be, such as gray water, that type of, that type of language? And I would entertain a motion to amend that if that was the case.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. In my experience, sewer use regulations enacted by the town, which do not require town meeting approval- town meeting approval, would be the place where you would put this kind of provision in place. It can be amended without coming back to town meeting, and there's obviously a lot of issues that you want to address in those sewer use regulations, including prohibited disposal practices. Whether or not this list is complete, I can't comment on that. I'm not a technical person, but what, what, the way this is drafted now, these are prohibited items. Although I would note, the words "should not be" leaves some question in my mind as to whether, in fact, that is a prohibition as opposed to what I would call an aspiration. So I think that if, like a lot of issues that have been, or questions that have been asked tonight, if this bylaw were to pass in its current form, I think some further work would have to be done, perhaps through sewer regulations, to implement the intent of the bylaw, to make sure that we're stating exactly what needs to be stated to make this program effective. I don't think this bylaw does that.
Thank you for your time.
Jan Spence, Precinct 2. Mr. Moderator, to the speaker, is there any plan to include the people, the units that have more than four houses involved? I represent Williamsburg, and we have 535 homes that we are using grinder pumps to pump out to the town sewerage. And I notice Article 26 has no action proposed.
There is no plan at this time.
No plan at this time. Thank you.
Beth Logan, Precinct 3. These should be relatively quick questions. The information in here talks about new and existing homes. What is the estimate for the number of new homes that will be included in the next, in the future, maybe five years? I'm sure they did an estimate to come up with the numbers.
Mr. Gilroy and Mr. Foley?
We did not do an estimate to come up with numbers, no.
Okay. The second question is, this talks about an additional cost, but it does not specifically state where the funding is coming from. I would think we would have, somebody would have made a decision. Is there any discussion of where the funding is actually coming from? How it's being funded? Who's being billed? Is it in the sewer?
Mr. Gilroy and Mr. Foley?
It was mentioned in the presentation. It would go, it would come from the Sewer Enterprise Fund. It would be on your sewer bill.
So it's not in the article, does the, and I guess this might be to town council, does the, and there's two actually things for town council. Should the article be stating that the funding is going to be billed to town residents? And the more important question that I have for town council is, there is no effective date on this article. If we vote for it tonight, does it go into effect tomorrow even though the town has had no time to create, to get a contract with a maintenance company?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, this is a general bylaw. If it's passed at town meeting, it will go to the Attorney General, who has 90 days to conduct a review. If the Attorney General approves the bylaw, and this is a general bylaw because it's different with zoning, but a general bylaw becomes effective when it is published in the newspaper after approval by the Attorney General. That could be relatively quickly. It can't be more than 90 days. So unless the bylaw itself includes a provision that it is not effective until some point in the future, it would become effective, as I said, upon approval by the Attorney General and publication in the paper. As to your, your first question, actually, this is a general bylaw. There's not, there's no warning in here that any money would be appropriated. So you, so you could not appropriate any money under Article 25 to pay for the cost to implement this program. My understanding, however, is that Monday night, the Sewer Enterprise Fund appropriation article was, I believe, postponed until after consideration of Article 25. So it would be potentially possible to appropriate money in Article 25 to pay for the cost of this program, if, if you know what that is going to cost. The other alternative would be to wait perhaps until the fall and, and appropriate the money at that time. But I would caution you that if you increase the enterprise fund budget at tonight's town meeting, it would necessitate an increase in sewer rates in order to balance the enterprise fund budget. Town meeting does not have the authority to, to set fees for sewer users. That would be, I believe in Chelmsford, it's the Department of Public Works that performs that function. So they would have to, in order to get your tax rate certified for the enterprise fund, you would have to submit a recap sheet that shows that your sewer rates are adequate to cover the cost of your sewer program. So if this bylaw is passed, you will need to appropriate money to fund the program, and the rates will have to be raised in order to, in order to have that revenue come in in fiscal '15.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can I, I'd like a follow-up, I believe, to town manager. So it sounds, if I understand everything correctly, as soon as this is approved by the state, it would go into effect. And the question is, will the town be prepared? Because that, I know, it could happen in a day, no laughing. It could happen up to 90 days, but that's still, that means the town has to change their sewer rates and get a contract in under 90 days, and we're not sure how many days under. Is the town prepared for that?
Mr. Manager?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker. Yes, the town is prepared for that. We've obviously been following this discussion and process for, for months. We anticipate, because of the time of the year, there are numerous towns at town meetings submitting bylaws, zoning and otherwise, to the Attorney General's office. This is town meeting season. We anticipate it'll be closer to the 90-day period. What would happen during that period is we would issue an RFP to solicit a vendor to do this work, and then obviously, we would, we would implement a rate schedule to, to capture that cost. The, the ways of funded, as, as the moderator, as the town council has said, we would have to adjust the budget, which is why we postponed it the other evening. The two funding sources available, one to the Sewer Enterprise Fund, to appropriate it in terms of raising the sewer fees. And then there is also Sewer Enterprise Fund free cash, which, which, which is also a potential funding source that you would make look to, to address one-time expenditures.
Thank you.
Mr. Thor.
Mr. Moderator, Glenn Thor, Precinct 5. I, there's a couple of numbers here that are very important, and I want to make sure I have them right. So through you to the proponent of the article. The town was apparently able to forego additional costs in the last part of the sewer installation process by, by having grinder pumps installed in these homes. Do we have an estimate? I heard $25,000 per household was the average cost of installing a gravity sewer in front of a household. Do we, do we have any estimate on the amount of money the town was able to forego spending in order to put this $1.5 million package of grinder pumps into the homes that have them?
Mr. Moderator, to the previous speaker, the, the general rule for the difference in, in, in install, of construction for a grinder pump installation versus a gravity is about one-half the price. And the reason for that is, the construction of a sewer system is dominated by the street excavation. That is the predominant cost, and a grinder pump installation requires street excavation to a four-foot depth, because that's the frost level. And a gravity sewer requires variable depths, with an average depth which might be considered to be eight, sometimes deeper, sometimes not. But in order to dig and excavation to eight feet, costs more than double the price of, to dig it to four feet. So as the example for Phase 4, because $88 million was expended to sewer 3,500 houses, when you divide that, you come up with the figure that you did quote, $25,000 is the average cost that it, and for Phase 4. Now, that was dominated by grinder installations. So the, the grav, I'm sorry, by gravity installations. The, each grinder installation would have been at about half that cost, or about $12,000 for the excavation component. But since the town purchased the pump, that could go up to $15,000, and the savings to the town would have been about $10,000 per household. That's, that's what makes it attractive, and that's why it was done, because in order to complete the project within a certain budget, that is a technique which is available in order to do that. So $10,000 is the number that you're requesting.
So the town, just to make sure I have the numbers right, Mr. Moderator, the town spent how much money to save $10,000? Or was that the savings per household that resulted from this change?
To the previous speaker through the moderator, well, these are all very, very rough numbers, of course, but if you, if you took, you know, 500 pumps and you, and you used $10,000 per, that number would come out to, what would that be?
Five, five million?
Is that five million? So, so that would be, that would basically be the number there.
Thank you.
Ms. Armstrong?
Pam Armstrong, Precinct 3. I also live at Scotty Hollow. My question is, how many units are using grinder pumps that are over two families? So you're three families up. How many units or uses are currently on grinder pumps?
To the previous speaker through the moderator, well, there are no, I will say this, of the list that was provided by the town, there are no three-family residences in Chelmsford that are tied in with a grinder pump. So that's the one number that I know. Now, the, I do not have numbers for the other higher-count complexes, like the condominium complexes, but those numbers were available, I think, in the fall. But since they were not part of the investigation for the Grinder Pump Committee, I don't have those numbers available.
I'm just gonna take two complexes, Williamsburg and Scotty Hollow, which is over 700 units, and they're all paying privately for grinder pumps. So are those units, as well as anyone else who has to pay privately for grinder pumps, gonna be exempt from any sewer increases, so that we're not paying double to support the 500 homes, where we're 700-plus homes that would have to pay double to support that?
Mr. Gilroy?
There was no consideration given to condominium complexes as to whether or not they would or would not pay. I, I have to say that that would probably be at the discretion of the town, should they choose to do that. But I think right now, everybody pays, you know, a, a flat rate for sewerage. Now, depending upon how it's done, whether it's done as an assessment that goes directly into the Sewer Enterprise Fund, or whether it's done as a, as an assessment which goes on to your, your water usage bill, I, I, I don't think that it could be done. I think, I think that everybody should, should basically bear the burden. That's my opinion, but the town, of course, has a final say.
We're not asking for opinion, that would be debate, Mr. Gilroy, so just...
So you're saying that the 500 homes should be covered by the town, and the 700-plus residents should pay double to help support those 500 homes? We're gonna be done?
I didn't, I didn't say that, you said it.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Myers?
Laurie Myers, Precinct 6. Can you tell me what the DP, DPW's estimated costs and concerns are?
Pardon me?
DPW, the estimated costs? And do they have an...
You'll have to ask DPW.
Nobody hear from DPWs that can answer that question?
So from Gary?
Good evening, Gary Perez-Cuddy, DPW Director. This is a very touchy subject for the simple fact that it has not been done before in full. The communities that they're talking about are real and have been done, and they've been done for other reasons, and it is not the whole town. We are the first town that I know of that's fully sewed that would take on this operation. For us, it's, it's a matter of what the number is, not whether really we should do it or not. And, and our fear is simply that I do not want to put a number out to this body that says that it's $17, it's $25 more, and then find it to be a lot more, or maybe even considerably less. My personal belief is I think the only real way you're gonna be able to do this would be to make a final decision on what is inclusive and what isn't inclusive, and then to bid it out. And come up with a number, and then I believe that's the only way that you'd be able to, you'd be able to say that this is the amount that everyone will pay for this service. And I do believe that year one will be a higher number than other years because of some of the things that are asked for, and I think you'd find that out too. And if you bid it in the sense that those are broken out à la carte, you should be able to separate those.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Evening, Mr. Moderator, Doug Bruce, Precinct 9. I have a question for the study committee about sunsetting of expenses for this. Was it ever considered to provide some sort of sunk sunset clause for the expenses of this? Or was it envisioned that this would be in perpetuity? Did the committee consider any sort of one-time benefit to the original property owner, and once the property was transferred, that Article 25 benefit would expire?
We did not consider that, no.
Thank you.
Dave Dubinsky, Precinct 2. Moderator, Mr. Moderator to the proponents. I, I have two concerns. One has already been stated by a previous speaker, related to double jeopardy. I reside, my wife and I reside in Williamsburg. She, I believe, resides in Scotty Hollow. So we are already paying town sewerage, and then we would be paying a premium or a tariff if this proposal passes. That's my, I echo her concern.
Well, is this a question? We're under question and answer, so...
Here comes the question.
Oh, okay.
So, the, the composition of Williamsburg essentially and effectively are single, duplex, triple, and quad buildings. So there are single-family homes, townhomes. There are duplexes. I happen to reside in a duplex. There are one, there are buildings with three families and buildings with four families, spread over almost a mile along the Merrimack River and deeper into the internal environment. So according to the wording of this article, may I assume that those owners of townhomes in Williamsburg who reside in single or duplex establishments, townhomes, would be included in this article and not excluded?
To the previous speaker through the moderator, I think what you're gonna have to look at here is the grinder pump, and to see how many units are serviced by the grinder pump, so...
All of the units are serviced by the two grinder pumps.
Yeah, so in each particular grinder pump, if you look at the number of units or residences that are attached to that, that would be the number that would be applied. So in this case, I don't, I don't think those units would be covered by this article, according to the wording of the article. But that's a good point.
So according to George Orwell, 1984, Animal Farm, all owner homeowners are equal except some are more equal than others?
Mr. Day?
Rich, Rich Day, Precinct 3. Question to, I guess, the committee. When you were dealing with the issues of cost and whatever, was it included in that potential cost that's coming up? And I heard DPW, and where's this all gonna be heading for? But was the private drive homes, existing private, private drive homes that exist in town, and there's somewhere between 75 and 100 of them, were they included? Because they're, they're existing homes now. There has been a stub put at the end of their common drive, and that they also would be required to tie, tie into sewer. Were they included in some calculation of cost? Because I kept hearing about the other, the numbers, and they just don't seem to totally add up. Because, as I had mentioned at the time that I was at the, at the meeting, that these individuals, through the regulations, sewer regulations, are, are not upfront, like, like the rest of the town, required to tie in in that first year, but they are... to tie in in that first year, but they are required to tie in when they sell that home or when their system fails or when an addition or some sort expands their footprint of their home. Therefore, they're on, they're there, they're existing. Now, these individuals did not, quote-unquote, sign up for the, quote-unquote, dollar pump. So, I mean, are these 100 potential connections? Because of their distance and setbacks, they're going to be a grinder pump connection. And were those numbers added into some of the calculations that have been coming up?
Mr. Moderator to the previous speaker, I believe that the 539 total of the list that we have for grinder pump installations include, what, 570? Yeah. It includes any location which will require a grinder pump but is not currently tied in. So for the purposes of calculating the total cost, when you use the total number, that number that's being included includes houses which do not currently have a grinder pump but will require a grinder pump at some time. So I think that might cover what you're talking about, but...
Well, again, I've been looking at the numbers and they don't match up. They don't match up at all. That these individuals, because of the fact that they're not on that one-year requirement thing, were not included in what's coming down the pike. So these 75 to 100 homes are going to be in the waiting of what's going to happen. As I said, they could be tomorrow if their system failed or their house goes up for sale, it could be a few years before something may or may not occur on their property.
Mr. Moderator to the previous speaker, are you saying that if this additional 75 houses were included, that the actual number of houses that will require grinder pumps would be 530 plus 75 or 570?
Potentially, yes.
624?
Yes.
Okay. That is, I don't know, as far as I know, the list that is provided by the town of 570 is, I'm sorry, 539, I apologize. It would include houses that will require a grinder pump. So I might be wrong, I might have incorrect information on that account, so I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, and again, that was, has been my confusion in looking at the numbers because I believe because they were not in that required one-year group, that became the enforceable component of who we're chasing or not chasing to make sure the connections are made. And the other group has sort of been out on the wayside and not really included in the numbers. So I just wanted to ask the question to see if it was or whether it was known to be because it is going to change some numbers for the town in regards to how they're doing it. Follow-up question. I know it was asked in regards to the, I don't know what the appropriate term is, the piece of paper that was supposed to be signed by anybody that got a grinder pump for a dollar. I don't want to call it a contract because I don't, I'm not legal in the fact, but when they sign that piece of paper that basically say, "I will get this grinder pump if I pay a dollar," that they're supposed to maintain in perpetuity that pump, those documents don't have any weight? I'm not sure I understand why something that occurred, some kind of contract between the town and an individual party somehow just wanders away. Maybe council might...
Is there a question there?
Well, maybe council knows whether those contractual pieces of paper that said, "This is, to get your pump, this is what you have to do," what kind of weight they have or no weight. I don't know whether you've seen it through this, well, you must have seen it through the sewer regulation, that policy of what they had to sign for, whatever.
That's what I was wondering, also.
No. My question is, does that piece of paper, paper that was signed saying, "Anybody that got a grinder pump had to take care of that pump and maintain it in perpetuity," does it have any standing or not?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, I'd have to see the piece of paper before I could answer that question.
Okay. I can find it for you if you, at some point. I'm not right this second. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Nukem?
Tom Nukem, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, through you to the presenter. There was discussion earlier about the cost per household for gravity fed versus a pump, a grinder pump, and you referred to that the grinder pump is often, you said a method that is available in order to hold down the costs of the system. And you said that in some of the final phases, that this was used extensively in order to cut down the costs. And I believe you said that it saves approximately $15,000 per household. I think you said it's roughly half.
To the moderator to the previous speaker, I think that was $10,000, which was, like I said, rough numbers based on simple calculation.
Okay. Now, you refer to that as being a rule of thumb.
Yes. The rule of thumb for sewer excavation is $60 per linear foot for a grinder pump connection and $140 per linear foot for a gravity connection. So that's why it's an $80 difference. So it's more than double to put in a gravity. And if you, those are the numbers that are used by Weston and Sampson when they predict the cost of a sewer project with regard to the street excavation, which is the dominant cost.
Okay. So those are not actual costs for our project. They're estimates and...
Yes, exactly. Those are rules of thumb.
All right. So the rules of thumb and not actual costs?
That's actually, that's correct, yes.
I want to remind people, we're under question and answer. We're looking for new information, factual information. Some of these questions are starting to sound a bit similar. We've been over an hour in the question and answers, so hopefully you'll have a new question, Mr. Latina.
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. The first year, is it your intention, if this passes, to do a statistical study of some of those 500 pumps, not test all of them?
To the moderator to the previous speaker, what do you mean by a statistical study?
If the town owns all these pumps after we pass this, you wouldn't necessarily want to expend town resources to the tune of whatever it takes to test them and make sure that they're wired properly and working properly if, in fact, there's some statistical test of, say, 50 pumps that would prove that out before you tested all of them?
Through the moderator to the previous speaker. So what you're referring to would be some sort of inspection program or baseline inspection for the pumps. And of course, the bylaw does not enter into that because that is considered to be an implementation detail. And exactly what that would consist of, there could be some cost analysis to see what is the most cost-effective way in which to do that, but I would not propose any particular method for doing that at this point because I consider that to be the purview of the DPW in order to do that effectively. But what you're saying might turn out to be true, but I just don't, I don't know.
Okay. And if we pass this, the article doesn't show a dollar figure, but the slides showed $289,000 as a figure for the first year. If we add that to the 560 that we're at deficit spending now, would this make the deficit for this year $850,000? Thank you.
Matt Hanson, Town Meeting Rep, in Precinct 5. I have a question regarding, I think, the implement, I guess, to the implementation. I'm asking maybe to the DPW Director, is it physically possible for the town to exclude people who live in a condominium that has a grinder pump who aren't going to be included in this from paying a fee to service grinder pumps if their grinder pump is in fact not being serviced? Just asking if that's physically possible and if during the implementation phase, somebody in the town could make a decision to not have those people pay for grinder pump replacements since theirs aren't being covered. Is that physically possible? I know it's not outlined here, but I think that's the question some people are getting at, and I'm curious myself. The grinder pump stations, people who have the grinder pump stations.
I would believe that it's definitely possible, which means that it would raise the rate to everyone else if they weren't included.
Okay. But it could be possible, though. It'd be a decision that had to be made at some point.
Yes.
Okay. Oh, thank you.
Sue Carter, Precinct 5. You were talking about the difference in cost between a grinder pump installation and a gravity sewer pump. I have two questions for you. Your numbers were based solely on Phase 4. Well, as a resident of town, I paid for Phases 1, 2, 3, and all the other phases. Do you have an average cost for all the sewer phases? Because I think to look just at the final phase, I'm not sure that gives us a good perspective on it.
Yes. Through the moderator to the previous speaker, there was about a 10-year difference between, you know, the first three phases and the final phases. So the costs in the earlier phases were less for a number of reasons. One was because of inflation and the exceptional inflation and construction costs during that period, but also because the topography of Phase 4 required more blasting, for example. So that's what, the cost in Phase 4 was different. So the total cost of the sewer project throughout the entire town is $165 million to sewer 11,500 units, and that comes out to an average of $15,000 per house. If you simply look at the first three phases, the average was only $10,000. And if you average that in with the $25,000 for the last one-third of the town, the overall average comes out to $15,000. So those are just some of the numbers that you're asking for.
Okay. And when you said the cost for gravity versus grinder pump, are you saying that the grinder pumps have a force main all the way to the town pump station? Do the gravity pumps not in fact use the gravity system? So to say that the difference is purely $10,000 a pump, is that truly accurate if they're benefiting from the gravity system that pulls the sewage to the pump station?
To the previous speaker through the moderator. So in my example, I live on Arman Drive. There's 10 houses, and there's a low-pressure sewer main running in that street. And generally speaking, in Phase 5, in order to save money, that's what you'll find for those 4 or 500 pumps. There are a number of streets where there are 20 houses or so all on the entire street running off a low-pressure sewer main. That's where the savings is. If you have a house which has a grinder pump which is going into a gravity sewer main, there's no savings in that case.
But those streets that you mentioned, after they get up to the main road, whatever connecting road they're on, do they not in fact use the gravity system before they go down to a town pump station?
Okay. To the previous speaker through the moderator, in some cases, they can pump entirely to a pump station on a low-pressure sewer main. One of the advantages of a low-pressure sewer is the fact that it does require fewer pump stations because they can be farther apart, because you don't require a downhill run for the entire distance. So the answer to your question is, some of them will empty into an existing gravity sewer before they get to a town pump station, and some will run all the way to a town pump station in their low-pressure sewer main. But, so there's no real simple answer to that.
Okay. But I was trying to get back to the direct comparison costs, and I think you've answered that they do benefit from the gravity sewers and the other roads as well. Thank you.
Okay.
Paul Erickson, Precinct 5. Mr. Moderator, through you to the Town Council.
Uh-oh.
I just want to get an opinion from Town Council if he is totally comfortable with the way that this article is written that's going to protect the town of Chelmsford as well as the grinder pump owners, or is there some more language that should go in there? I noticed before you seemed to have a little bit of concern about a couple of items.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. Can I go home now? I certainly have, I think I've indicated previously that I do have some concerns with the way this is drafted. The language is not as precise as I would like to see it. I would remind everybody, this is a petitioned article. You know, you do the best with what you're, what's the expression? You play the cards that you're dealt or something? I don't gamble, but I think that's the expression. I would certainly, I would certainly want an opportunity, if this were to pass, to sit down with the DPW Department, the Town Manager, and see if a lot of the unanswered questions that could give rise to potential liability could be addressed, as I indicated earlier, through adoption of regulations to implement this. You know, oftentimes when you adopt a bylaw, you want to have an explicit provision in the bylaw that authorizes someone to enact regulations to carry out the intent of the bylaw. Sometimes Town Meeting isn't going to want to do that because you're thinking it's maybe a blank check. But in this instance, the DPW Department has the authority to enact regulations governing the use of sewers. And so I think you could enact regulations that would address a lot of those unanswered questions and perhaps protect the town from some liability. This bylaw itself doesn't do it, but I think you could implement something in the future to address a lot of those concerns. Do you want me to address that?
Mr. De Silvio, question. That came from Mr. Day? Okay. So that came from... There was a question earlier about the agreements for a dollar, and we've been provided one, Town Council wanted to respond.
So I think Mr. Day, I provided this. It's entitled Agreement of License Easement for Grinder Pump, and it's to be signed presumably by the homeowner. And it says, "I accept the Chelmsford Sewer Commission's offer to purchase a grinder pump and its associated electrical control panel unit for the cost of $1. Failure to accept this offer within 60 days of receiving the agreement will void this offer. I agree to the terms as outlined in the policy for on-lot individual grinder pump unit installation for single-family homes effective July 2008." Go to the last paragraph. It makes a statement about that. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. And this is the policy?
Yes.
And the policy that's referenced in the waiver is, "Homeowners accepting the offer will be responsible for proper installation of the grinder pump, including connection to the public sewer as per Town of Chelmsford and Chelmsford Sewer Commission regulations, and for operation and maintenance of the grinder pump unit in perpetuity." I believe the previous question was, and I don't mean to put words in anybody's mouth, but I believe the previous question is, would this, does this constitute a binding commitment or contract on behalf of the homeowner? You know, I certainly, if I were faced today with someone who brought a legal challenge to the obligation to maintain it, I would certainly cite this as a defense on behalf of the town. I think if the town, however, enacts as a matter of general legislation, a bylaw, I'm not sure this would be very relevant going forward. Ms. Myers?
All set? Laurie Myers, Precinct 6. Mr. Moderator, with your guidance, I'd like to file a motion to send Article 25 back to study. I think we've heard from many people, we still have no idea what we're getting ourselves into. We're asking 11,000 people to pay for a problem, and recognizably, it is a problem, and we don't know exactly what the issue is, or what the costs are, excuse me.
Town Council said, while it is a privileged motion, it's more suited for bringing up a debate.
Okay. Okay.
We're still in question and answer.
I was told to stand up during question and answer, correct?
I believed it ended, thought it was this portion, I've been corrected, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Newcomb.
Tom Newcomb, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, through you to the Town Manager. Paul, if you could briefly address an issue, there's been a lot of concern over what our bill basically is going to be if this is enacted, and you said that you're going to put it out to, that if it's passed, you'll put it out to, you'll put out an RFP. Can you talk very briefly about the feasibility of maybe doing an RFP ahead of time, so that in this coming, and then this coming back to this body in the fall or the special Town Meeting, where, so the RFP would be subject to Town Meeting approval, so that that way, this board would have real numbers as to what we're looking at?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The difficulty with that is, this is not going to be a fixed-price contract. It's not like we're going to pay XYZ grinder pump maintenance company X hundred thousands of dollars to be responsible for the grinder pumps. What it's going to be, it's going to be a cost or claims incurred type of a contract, where, you know, we're going to pay you X many dollars per hour, and we're going to pay for equipment and repairs. So, I don't know how we could come back to the Town Meeting with a cost, because we don't know what we're going to incur. We can cite averages, such as the committee did, and that's the number that would be requested under the enterprise fund, but we can't bid it, it's not going to be a fixed-price contract. It's going to be a, you know, an hourly labor rate. There'll be sometimes, you know, what's the rate on holidays and weekends and so forth, and basically, every month, we'll get an invoice that we'll verify with Public Works, and we're going to pay the actual cost. So, that's how it would be done. It wouldn't be a go out and bid it and then, you know, like you were going to buy a truck or a vehicle and say, oh, this is what it costs now that we bid it. So, that's, so I really can't see how we could come back to this Town Meeting with a definitive cost not to exceed or what have you in any given year.
Jim Crowley, Precinct 7. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the presenters and perhaps the Town Manager. A couple of questions on economic equality. And for the record, I don't have a grinder pump, so I'm not sure about some of these. One is, I think for, it was mentioned earlier for sewer neutrality, the rebates of 2.7 million was made available. Does that mean that there were some residents who had zero net cost to install?
To the previous speaker, through the moderator. So, through the 15 years or so that the grinder pumps were being installed, there were actually a number of different policies applied, and the number that I gave you was an average of all of those numbers. But you will find a certain period of time in which a grinder pump owner received no installation assistance, whatever, they would approximately pay $2,000 more than a gravity person. There were other periods in which the grinder pump owner was compensated by approximately the $2,000, which was their additional cost. Those are the ones that were neutral. And then, in other periods, there were homeowners for which the town did the installation of those pumps, and they received a benefit of about $1,500. And when you average all those numbers together, that's where you get the zero number. It's, there's a neutrality. But there's actually some people who received much less and others who received more. So, it's, you know, it's just complicated because you have to go through it year by year.
Okay, thank you. For the second question, and perhaps for Town Manager, is there any data on how many households of that 11,500 are on fixed income?
I don't have that data available, no.
Okay. The other question, I think the cost right now was said about $13 per year. Is that correct?
Which cost? That's a little open.
Sure, sorry, okay, good question. Should this pass the cost to the 11,500? Would it be about $13,000, $13 per year?
Mr. Moderator to the Speaker, the, that amount is equivalent to $150,000 a year, $13 per year.
Okay, so math says about $3 per quarter, per fiscal quarter.
$6.50 biannually, right.
Okay. All right, and the last question, and back to fixed-income households. Are there any rebates, mitigation, or abatements available? Should one of the houses that have grinder pumps, if they're on a fixed income, are there rebates available for them to get assistance if it costs them $3,500 to replace a pump under today?
No, we have no such policy today. I don't know that we would, we would come up with such a policy. I mean, you're introducing a very, another component to the process, which is, what is the fixed income? What is the level? And then, what's the level of assistance? We tend not to operate those type of programs, and so, I don't envision that being the case. What I did mention is that in the future, in order to assist people with limited incomes, perhaps those who use less sewer slash water services, the town may wish to look towards a tiered rating system similar to what you do with your water bills, whereas your volume and your unit cost increase the greater volume of water that you use. But that's a whole separate discussion, and don't want to distract from what we're doing this evening. But that is sort of how you could provide relief to those on fixed incomes, who generally tend to use less utilities such as water and sewer.
Understood. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, through you to Town Meeting, there are restrictions on the ability of the town to grant exemptions from sewer rates to particular classes of people. There are provisions of the general laws which do allow the deferral of sewer use charges for certain individuals who meet the income standards for property tax exemptions. But that requires, that statute has to be accepted by Town Meeting, and there are essentially strict requirements that have to be met before the town can charge someone less than what the going sewer rate is. It's regulated by the general laws, and you have to comply with those provisions of the general laws.
Claire Genot, Precinct 7. My question is one that's bothered me since a couple of years ago, when this whole discussion began to brew, and I think it's a legal question. I have a lousy water pressure in my house because I'm at the end of the water line, and in my basement is a pump. And I pay to maintain that pump. I paid to replace that pump when it needed to be replaced, and I'm wondering how is this different legally?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. Well, conceptually, it's probably not any different. Other than the obvious, you know, it's a different function, but it certainly, I think, is an appropriate analogy. Could the town pass a bylaw to provide...
Better water pressure?
Well, that's a problem. I mean, that's a problem because you have independent sewer districts.
Water district.
Excuse me, water district, so.
Understood, but, so, but legally, I guess my point is, I see that as a piece of private property that resides on my residence or my real estate and my house, and therefore, my responsibility. And I'm a little confused by if the plan was to make the grinder pump owners own their grinder pump at the price of a dollar, as opposed to giving it to them outright. I assume it was because it was their responsibility to, and I don't understand how we change all that now. I guess we can, though. Is that what you're saying?
I'd like to make a comment, if I could. Through the moderator, through the previous speaker. I'd like to just modify your analogy a little bit, to represent in the following way. Assume you had your own private water supplies through a private well, but there was a program in town, for whatever reason, to put you onto the public water system, and you required a pump in order to connect into the public water system, but then the town, you preferred not to do that because your private water supply was perfectly adequate, but the town forced you to tie in, and that required you to have that pump. So, I think that would be a slightly more accurate analogy.
We're still under question and answer, so make sure. Ms. Deary?
Debbie Deary, Precinct 6. I have two questions. One, I would like to know, and I did listen to the thing car meeting, and I was listening to DPW. Speak up, all right, let's see. I would like, I would like to know, because our water bill, we take the amount of the gallonage from our water bill, and thus, we are charged for our sewer bill. There's no distinction for what really is going in the sewer. So, if you wash your car, as we all know, or you cut your lawn, you're getting charged your sewer bill.
We need a question.
This article passes. What I want to know, because I'm very concerned, are we going to be charged from the water to the sewer to the grinder pump? Is it going to be the same type thing? And is that amount, which I feel should be clearly shown, which each household is paying for the grinder pump, if there's passes, because I don't think it's fear to the residents that they have to be paying a percentage of their water bill to the sewer bill to the grinder pump, because we're all equal, if that's, if this passes the way it is?
I'm not following your question, so what...
Debbie, I think I know what you're, I think I know what you're asking, okay?
Okay.
First of all, just as a point of information, if you look at the sewer rates, the sewer rates around the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Chelmsford is in the lowest, lower 20th percentile of sewer rates around the state. Our average rate is about $350 per year. There are some towns that pay well over $1,000 a year. Now, the way that we propose this is, there would be an assessment on everybody's sewer bill, and that assessment would go into the sewer enterprise fund, which would pay for this particular project. That was our recommendation. Any other recommendations, other than that, are, will be handled at a separate meeting. That's the way we recommended it.
So, if I, if I understand you, what you're saying is that we'll all have a flat rate?
That was our recommendation, yes.
All right, that's what I wanted to check on. I have another question, though. I would like to know, through legal counsel, because I have this question, and I, it's the first opportunity that I was able to ask. The betterment, the money that was not paid through the betterment, which was $614, $174, is that illegal if this were passed to recoup the betterment taxes?
I assume, Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, I assume you're talking about existing connections, not new connections, because my answer would be different. But with respect to existing connections, the town had a limited opportunity in terms of time to assess betterments. And I believe the statute says they have to be assessed within a reasonable period of time. I think it would be exceedingly difficult, if not impossible, to now go back and reassess properties how many years after the assessments were made in the first place. I would want to look at that question more carefully, but I think for purposes of this discussion, I think it's a safe assumption that the answer would be no. It would be, at best, extremely difficult to try to recoup those assessments that were not made at the time.
All right, fine, thank you.
Mr. Lane?
Jim Lane, Precinct 7. I would like to move the question, please.
What Mr. Lane asked for would normally be appropriate under debate that would call the question and bring it to a vote. What Town Council said, we could treat this as a motion to close the question and answer period.
If Town Meeting votes to close the question and answer period... All you're doing is closing the question and answer period, and then you will move directly to debate.
One second, on the point of order. I already have a motion, and I'm trying to get the appropriate answer from Town Council, as how to proceed, whether we...
This is Kelly B. for Chelmsford Telemedia. It's been a long evening of debate. One of the problems with this is...
After consulting with Town Council, it is a privileged motion which would require two-thirds vote of this body in order to end the question and answer period and proceed to debate. And so, if it passes with a two-thirds majority, we will go right into debate. So, at this time, I would ask all those in favor to raise your tickets.
So, we have a motion to end the question and answer period, which has been going on for roughly an hour now. Needs two-thirds.
I'm going to ask for the tellers to come forward and close. You know, I've been doing this since 1991. I'm old school. So, we can do this then on, via the...
Point of order, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
Final, Town Precinct 4. Seeing that there were only two questioners remaining and being part of the MarCom Committee, recognizing that the moderator has discretion to view the questioners and end the question and answer period at his discretion, it might be advantageous for you to recognize two more speakers. Thank you.
It might, but I have to check Town Council whether once a privileged motion has been raised, if I have any discretion. Town Council suggested I proceed with the vote.
Mr. Moderator, just a question. While you're, while you're having a question, moderator?
Yes. I am not. I just brought my clicker up here, so I didn't leave it at the table. I will put it... Better yet, it's going to the Town Clerk. So, you may begin voting. One is in favor of ending...
So, this is a motion due, it was originally brought forward to move the question, which would drive from immediate... But that can't be done during the question and answer period. So, what's happening now is that this is a, basically become a message, I'm sorry, a motion to end the question and answer period. Requires a two-thirds majority, and I would, at this moment, it doesn't appear to quite have that. It's very close, however. So, the final couple of questions will be asked, and then we'll move on to the debate portion, which could take quite some time.
The motion failed, so we're still in question and answer.
That's when members of the community can come forward and make their cases. I suspect we'll be hearing from a number of homeowners who have these grinder pumps.
Through the moderator to the Grinder Pump Study Committee. Who are you the, Morning Foley, Precinct 5, I'm new at this. Thank you for your patience. My question is, could, the big question, could the Grinder Pump Study Committee tell me, after the months of research and everything else, what is the cost that you have determined from our community and all those other communities? What is... What is the cost?
The cost of what? Could you clarify that? Maybe they can answer that.
Yeah, I mean, you could give it to me either in the big number, what do you think the cost would be to maintain, repair, and replace? I think you gave me a number which was approximately $150,000. Is that correct?
Mr. Gilroy?
Just so you won't be arguing with your husband, I'll be glad to answer that question. The number that we came up with-
Yeah.
...was $150,000. That was our, that was our number.
Thank you. Thank you.
We don't know what the other towns cost, but that's what it costs here.
Seeing and hearing no further questions-
I would also like to respond to that, to answer that through the moderator, the previous speaker. I, I would only ask that the Sewer Fairness Alliance is always looking for ways to reduce the cost of this program and there were some recommendations made by the committee for which the cost will already be covered. One of them happens to be the distribution of the users manuals. This was a recommendation of the committee, but Ewan and F.R. Mahoney, after their appearance at the committee, they sent us 275 of the user guides to distribute among the homeowners who had not yet received them. And they also agreed to perform startup inspections for any, any installation which had not been registered to receive a startup inspection. And those will simply help to defray some of the costs in the first year. So I just wanted to mention that. Yeah, at no cost, startup inspection at no cost, because that was part of the original contract with the town, the fact that they did not receive-
That's way beyond the scope of the question that was asked, that's getting into debate. So why don't we-
Okay, I apologize.
I see no further people in line, given, oh.
I recognize that we've had enough questions. Is this something new, unusual? We had not hit her?
A question for, for this body relative to, to previous work. Was it ever presented to this body when the sewer articles were first, first put before us to vote for the town? A, the original depth of the system was, was clearly not going to sewer the entire town and B, in the, in the final phase, that we, that there was an optional cost to increase the number of homes that would be gravity fed? And I'll take an answer from DPW, town, whatever. I believe there would have been an extra cost to do a certain number of extra homes and I don't believe that that original depth was made clear that it wouldn't do the whole town.
Mr. Perskett? Either Mr. Foley or Mr. Gilroy or Mr. Perskett or any of them.
Well, if I understand the question he's asking us, if, if it came before this body to, when the, when the sewerage was originally, originally started, I mean, there were a number of phases for the sewerage. The last phase, I believe, was to fund an overrun, which I believe was in the vicinity of $39 million. That was the, to, to complete the final phase. The, the, 16 million, I'm sorry. But, you know, we didn't look into it. That, that wasn't our, wasn't our particular charter to look into those particular numbers. I mean, what's done is done. We can't go back and correct that. It was, it was done on, on, on a vote of this body. Every time there was a, a new face we done, the town, the town, town meeting voted on it. So that wasn't part of our charter to go back and look at it again.
At this time, I am going to ask the finance committee for a recommendation.
The majority of the finance committee recommended against Article 25 as shown in the finance committee warrant book.
Does the finance committee have position on the, the motion as presented this evening? I think that's what-
We do not. We have not met tonight.
Board of selectmen have a recommendation on the proposal?
Board of selectmen recommended approval by a vote of three zero. I'm sorry, to the original warrant article with the change to one or two units.
At this time, we're now in discussion.
Discussion, do we debate?
Discussion, debate.
Debate.
Ms. Myers?
Debate, am I good? I'm asking for guidance on this again. So I'm filing a motion to refer, refer Article 25 back to the grinder pump study committee. We don't have, we don't know numbers. People have not been notified. I, I know they did the best they could with the information they had, but I think that, you know, the, whether it's this existing committee or we create, you know, people, new people step up or appointed. So adding to the committee's charge from October 24th, 2013, was to notify 539 homes with grinder pumps via certified mail of the committee's mission to gather cost information on individual grinder pumps. Confer with the DPW regarding implementation of regulations. Require all owner, homeowners that currently have grinder pumps, including electrical system, inspect, inspect, have their systems inspected.
Excuse me, Ms. Myers. Is this in writing? We need the motion submitted in writing.
I do. I have it. It's, yes.
If you could please-
Oh, I'll come up.
As you can sense from Lori Myers' proposed amendment, a lot of the town meeting reps here feel they do not have an adequate set of information to vote on this, despite the fact that it was presented at last fall's-
While town council is reviewing, I'll point out, this is not a privileged motion. It is debatable and it needs a simple majority to pass. So we're going to take a moment while they straighten out the language.
One of the problems has been for the grinder pump study committee is identifying the homes that actually have these things. And you would think that would be straightforward. Apparently it was not. There are approximately 500, close to 600 homes within town that have these grinder pumps and roughly only about a half of them have been identified.
The town clerk and the town council has asked me to take a five minute recess so we can appropriate re-review this. So we will be in recess till 10 minutes of 10.
If you can hear in the background, there's going to be about a five minute recess to sort of sort this out. So let me try to frame it for you. The, the, the town sewered itself through its sewer commission through a number of phases. And the easy, this was predicated and precipitated actually by the fact that a lot of the homes in North Chelmsford, especially along the Merrimack River, had septic systems that were failing. So the town needed to do something pretty dramatically in order to, to rectify that situation. So, so began the, the searing. And that was during the 1980s. I don't know the exact date. As the phases progressed, it became desirable of, from the standpoint of this body, to see that the whole town was sewored. By comparison, Bill Ricka next door has partially sewored its town and partially not. They have no intention of completely doing it. And it was a, it was quite a testament to the willingness of the town to undertake the cost of searing the whole town that this was done. What happened was that the easiest sections were done first, the ones that were, and the ones that were in most critical need. In order to make this system work, the sewage has to flow downhill by a gravity system. So that means properties that are located at high elevations have it made, but properties that are at low elevations can't necessarily get their sewage into the system at whatever depth it was planned for the main pipes without some assistance. That's where these grinder pumps come in. The problem is that toward the end, the sewer project was running over budget and so as a, as a way around this thorny issue of all these homes that were below grade, unable to provide the, the, the wherewithal, the town had the, would have had the option of installing more pumping stations at its cost, which would add to the cost of the sewer system, or to increase the number of homes for which these grinder pumps would be necessary. If you, if you distribute the need for the pumps among the homeowners, then the, the pumping stations themselves become fewer in number. You don't need as many. The cost of the, of the, of the project goes down. So I think what happened was that a lot of homeowners toward the end of the project, those who hadn't been sewored yet, ended up sort of, as was pointed out, they had perfectly functioning sewer septic systems on their own, many of them, and yet they were forced to abandon those, take on the cost of these grinder pumps and the maintenance of them and, and, you know, tie into the town system, whether they wanted to or not. The town made some accommodation by giving them reduced rates, their, their sewer betterments were lowered, they got the, the pumps for $1. But in the, down the road, they agreed that they would have to maintain these pumps on their own. And so that is really the question. The pumps are, are big and they're expensive and, and they fail, they've been failing a lot more frequently with a lot less time and durability than, than might have been expected. They weren't necessarily the best possible grinder pumps. The town, of course, was the one who specified what those grinder pumps would be. It wasn't like the homeowner had a choice of going out on the open market and buying whichever one was best for that particular situation. So you can see it's a very complicated situation here and this Sewer Fairness Alliance came into being about a year ago. They'd actually had been talking to themselves. I spent a long evening, actually, with David Foley, who lives not far from me. It's amazing what a difference just a, a, you know, a couple of blocks can make. My home on Park Road has a gravity fed system. I don't have, I, I made the cut. There's a, at the end of where, where Park Road crosses Proctor, there is a connection to his home and because Proctor Road takes a little rise between that endpoint and his home, he needs to, he's, he's, he's high enough, but, but he needs to have a grinder pump to get his sewage over this hump and into the system. So that's part of the sort of unfairness of this in that sense. And the question is then, do these grinder comes, grinder pumps essentially become part of the cost of homeownership? Lots of people have homes with special needs, they have a lot of rocky ledge, or they, they have butt wetlands, or, or whatever the needs might be. That sort of becomes part of the cost of, of owning, maintaining that home. The Sewer Fairness Alliance have said, look, we've got these grinder pumps and it's going to make, it's going to reduce the value of our homes when we go to sell them, not to mention the cost of maintaining them. And so can the town come up with something, since you stuck us with this problem, is the town willing to meet us halfway in terms of the maintenance? That is the core of the debate. It's been that way all along. We have a great many people here in the back of the room here at the senior center who I am sure represent many of the households who have these grinder pumps. And the last more than an hour, hour and a half, we have been focused on just the questions and answers for the proponents of this bylaw. Part of the problem, as you have seen, is that the bylaw that was printed in this green book, which everybody got, is not the one that we're actually voting on. We're actually, there's some, some changes were made in what was actually presented to town meeting. And so consequently, there's been some confusion. It's very hard to see the screen for all the town meeting reps, no doubt, hard for you to see at home as well. So what Lori Myers is proposing here in this, in this amendment that she's proposing is that essentially we table this again until the next town meeting. This would be the fall town meeting, or perhaps a special town meeting called just for the purpose of this, of this study. To allow more time for a couple of things. First of all, for all of the owners of the grinder pumps to be identified and contacted and their preferences learned. Second of all, for the town to get a much better handle on what the state of all the grinder pumps is, because if a lot of them were to fail, if the town were to undertake the maintenance cost, and if a lot of them were to fail right away, that would, that would be a substantial cost. And the third thing is to figure out how to best spread out the cost of this extra added expense for maintaining these grinder pumps. Will there be an assessment townwide? Will the, will the town absorb part of that? One of the articles that came up on Monday night that was postponed involved what to do with the monies collected as sewer betterment fees. When the town installs sewer to your home, you've had to pay a fee basically for that privilege to get hooked up. And those monies, those sewer betterment fees go into an account which can be tapped for reducing the debt of the sewer project or any of a number of things. So the, the, one of the questions here is, is to what extent will those sewer betterment fees in the short and long term be used to offset the cost of this program? I know it sounds complicated. My head hurts just trying to explain it to you. So you can appreciate that this is a very complex situation and, and I think the sense of the town meeting representatives is that they don't have as much information as they'd like to in order to make an informed decision. At last town, in last fall's town meeting, there was a clear sense that the representatives understood the magnitude of the problem, wanted to try to come up with a fair solution, but a lot of facts were not known. More facts are known now, but perhaps not enough to justify a vote tonight. And that's what we're going to find out. Lori Myers is proposing a fairly long amendment, but at its crux, it would send this back to the drawing board for more work and have it come back before the town meeting representatives, probably at the fall town meeting. So we'll see what's happening. The moderator, Mike McCall, is a temporary moderator. You, you're probably saying, where is John Kirland? If you missed it, John Kirland has a grinder pump in his home and so he's recused himself from the deliberations to make sure that there's no even hint of, of his influencing the debate one way or the other. And speaking of debate, just to remind you, all of the, all of what you've heard up to this point involves only questions and answers, although arguably some of the questions were more in, in the spirit of debate. We have not begun the debate yet. We have, it is now almost 10 o'clock and we could easily continue debate until 11 o'clock and, and so it might be that tonight, despite the fact that we began at 7:30, almost two and a half hours ago, we might not even get through one warrant article. If this is postponed, then we'll move quickly into some of the other articles that are not nearly so contentious, so complicated, or have such far reaching implications. I keep, I'm, I'm keeping my eye on the podium up there. I don't see any indication that Mike McCall, our temporary moderator, is about to resume the meeting. There's a lot of discussion going on here on the floor of town meeting and I think we're in for a long night one way or the other. I think this almost guarantees that we're going to have a three night town meeting, maybe even four, because we have many warrant articles yet to get to. Some of them are, are going to take a lot of time and so we'll just have to stay tuned. I'm going to turn it back over to the, to the live scenes that you see here. Stay with us, we'll be back with you as soon as the meeting resumes.
Just for your information, we'll be starting in about two to three minutes at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, he's got so much to say that hasn't been brought up, it's just-
Do you like, do you like these questions?
This is it. I was going to get up and talk to it.
And he said, I think he said, "I have..."
Sorry.
Oh, okay. And he, you know...
Yes, he does, because he got his receipt for $150.
Like, you know, I, I'm not asking anybody to do anything for me.
If it doesn't, then I gotta get up and say something. He said, "This is a very important piece of information, it should not be left out." I mean, we got a, we got an obligation, you know?
Yeah. Who's the company's?
I don't know the name, but he says that's who it was.
Yeah, I guess it's a timeshare. If you look at it as, are the grinder pumps a part of the sewer system and should they be treated like the sewer pumping stations? If the answer is yes, even if it's $30 a year, then it looks like you must be for it.
Yeah, but I don't think that's, yeah. I don't, I don't think it's that simple. I think people are like, it's on the cost.
He can say that he did.
I don't think it depends on like cost as much as...
I'm, I'm saying that's what I, I'm getting the sense that...
Like, no, no, it's like, I feel like if, if they knew 100% that it was $200,000 a year, like most people would feel comfortable voting on it. It's the, it's the like uncertainty of the cost.
Not yet, I don't think they will. We never, never set the balance every time.
So you were just watching a sort of side discussion with, um, Honorina Maloney, the, uh, town clerk, uh, our town council, and, uh, the others who are involved in this. A lot of side discussions taking place across the floor, as you can see. All of this is, uh, sort of a timeout as, uh, we're preparing the motion. And the, the problem in part is, I, I'm seeing it, that the motion is being typed into the keyboard, um, right now so that it can be displayed for everybody to see.
If you could please take your seats.
Not sure that, uh, Mike McCall appreciated what he would be getting himself into by taking, agreeing to take on this, uh, temporary moderator, uh, assignment. The crowd has largely resumed its seats and is slowly quieting down. Can tell you that the room is...
Just waiting for the motion to come up on the screen.
We're still waiting for the, uh, full motion to be keyboarded in and, uh, checked so that the, it can be displayed on the screen. You'll be able to see it at home as well and, uh, then we'll proceed to a vote. Again, this is essentially a vote that will, uh, table this article until some point in the future. It might seem a little chaotic, but actually this, all of the, the rules and regulations here are pretty well prescribed. Okay. So the town meeting reps are getting their first look at this motion, which, uh, basically sends the article back to the grinder pump study committee for the study.
So I have a motion by Lori Myers. I'm not going to read the entire language, it's up here. And this is a motion to commit for further review. I believe it's essentially committing to the fall town meeting. I can't see the bottom. It's spring. All right, I've been corrected. It is to commit to the spring of next year for further study. This, I'll remind the body, this is a debatable motion. It requires a simple majority to pass, and so we are now in the debate period with regard to the motion to commit Article 25 back to the study committee until next year's annual Spring Town Meeting. So if anybody wants to come forward to the microphone to speak for or against this... Ms. Myers, do you want to explain your motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Tom Gilroy, Precinct 9.
Well, actually, town council, I should hear from the proponent and then you'll be next in line, Mr. Gilroy.
Okay, go right ahead.
Lori Myers, Precinct 6. I, I started researching this, um, read the, the extensive report by, uh, by the committee, and I want to thank them for their work. They did great work and I think they did the best they could with the information they were given. I, as a citizen, as a citizen and a town meeting rep, mostly as a town meeting rep, I want clear information when I ask 11, a little over 11,000 people to pay more money for something into perpetuity. And I don't feel comfortable doing that with the information that we've been given. And that's, that's the purpose of this article, um, and I mean, if, that's it. I, I, I think we don't have clear information and clear numbers. Uh, the thing that, that stood out to me the most today was that not one person was sent a letter of the 529 from the committee from the town saying, "We're gathering this information for the purposes of what's your import." And that was not done. And I think out of courtesy for everyone, including the 11,000 people that are being asked to pick up the tab for this, we should get very clear information before we start raising people's sewer rates because of it. Thank you.
Mr. Gilroy?
Tom Gilroy, Precinct 9. Ladies and gentlemen, the committee, as I said, met throughout the winter. We gathered as much information as we could. I don't really understand what additional data from the 250 or so people, what difference that's going to make. If you look at statistics, one would say that the data will probably be just, just the same as it was for what we collected. The Sewer Fairness Alliance spent many, many months prior to our, starting the committee to go out and get information and query all of these people. They were only successful in reaching this particular, particular group. Uh, the, the committee obviously is willing to do whatever the, whatever this body says, but I don't really think that it's going to get, going to gather information. It's, we're still not going to know what the cost is. Like they say, the cost is what the cost is, because we don't know what it is because we have no experience in doing it. We know what the hourly rate's going to be, we know what the estimated material's going to be, but when you put a cost-type contract together, as you all know, the final cost is what it is. I mean, we can make it, we can make it not to exceed, that's possible, but it's a, it's a cost-type contract, you're only going to pay for the hours and the material. And I, I think that, uh, to do this for another year is just putting off this whole process and I think that the people that have these pumps, that have the, the problems that they have, I think that they are entitled to have some type of resolution and that resolution should come now. Thank you very much.
Mr. Thoron?
Glenn Thoron, Precinct 5. This is a complex issue and because it is such a complex issue and it will affect everybody in town, you know, I, as they were beginning to gather and pull together all the information later on in the meetings, I went to the last three, last three meetings of the committee to, to try and understand just exactly what the burden would be on the town. Now, just like you can ask 529 households to give you information, they may not respond. So what you're going to end up with is a statistical analysis of whatever responses you get. And the committee was in touch with 33 people that came in and told long stories about what their experiences were with the pumps. They also had contact with hundreds of people that they did get in touch with, which is a fairly representative sample of people with grinder pumps, who are able to relate to them their experience of the pump works fine, no problem, I had these problems, wires installed backward, that sort of thing. So a, again, it's statistical analysis. And if you, uh, were at the meetings, you would also heard the statistical analysis of the towns that are actually paying to maintain the same grinder pump. So being a analytical type person like I am, I took down notes and I determined, you know, what would we charge, what would it cost us for time and materials to do the same thing that a Marion was doing, or a Gloucester was doing, or an Amesbury was doing on a per-pump basis? You know, they have a certain expected lifetime, they fail, things go wrong, you have to fix them, you hire somebody to come in and fix them when they fail. What is that going to cost us on average? Because it is a statistic. So my numbers came out actually between 80,000 and 160,000, which is kind of on a little bit leaning toward the lower end of what the committee ultimately recommended. We didn't talk to each other. I was just taking notes. So what we would experience if we went into this particular activity is what is it going to cost Chelmsford to be able to support the maintenance of these pumps? We ask these people to take on costs in perpetuity to defray costs that the town would have had to spend in order to dig deeper ditches, install, uh, different kinds of a sewer system. So they're bearing some of the burden. They all pay, by the way, for the same big pumping stations that we pay for, so they're paying a little bit for pumping your sewage as well. But they also own a piece of the system of sewers in this town where they have to pay in perpetuity for failures. So looking at the statistics, I believe we have enough information and the number is small enough that I can understand it per household to be able to support integrating the grinder pumps with the rest of the town sewer system. So I really don't want to postpone this for an entire year to get information that may be even more complex if you try to pile it all up than the straightforward information that we have. Excuse me. So I believe we should defeat this motion, deal with this tonight. If we believe it's a fair and right thing to do to support this entire part of our sewer system with a small addition to our sewer charges, then let's pass the main motion. And if it's not, then let's defeat the main motion. I'll argue in favor of the main motion later, but to put it off for a year, I think adds no value to the ultimate decision for this town.
Ms. Myers?
Lori Myers, Precinct 6. With all due respect to Mr. Thoron, the findings committee's had concerns with this. Town cons, council has had concerns.
We, I believe we've enacted a policy where we do not address other people by name, so I would caution you...
Oh, my apologies. Um, out of courtesy for the 11,000 people who will be paying for this, we owe it to the rest of the town to, to conduct, to obtain thorough, a thorough review and investigation. I don't believe this was done. That is not the fault of the committee. It was based on information that they were given at that time and I think we owe it to this town to do a thorough review and investigation. We've heard other issues of policies with DPW. We've heard issues where, um, Scotty Hollow could be paying double for this. I think we need to send it to committee, review it again in, in depth, and then, and then deal with it in the spring.
Hi, my name is Liz Reinowich. I live at 3 Azalea Court. I'm not a rep, so I hope it's okay for me to be here.
Yes.
Okay, well...
You just can't vote. You can...
Okay, you know what my vote is.
You have to step closer so everybody could hear you.
Okay. I'm, as a grinder pump owner and someone who's on the Sewer Fairness Committee, I find this, um, amendment...
It's a motion...
...insulting. Um, as a gr, I thought I read that you're asking me, me, as a grinder pump owner, to pay for another inspection. When I got my grinder pump, I hired one of the town-appointed grinder pump installers. Those installers were certified by the town. I did what the town asked me to do. I did not want a grinder pump. I had a perfectly good septic system. I had a pipe in my driveway for sewer. The town, yes, sent me a letter saying, "We'll give you this for a dollar," but if I didn't do that, I was going to get sued. And I would pay for the town and my legal fees. So for, to ask me to have another inspection is very insulting, since I did go with the towns. I followed the town in good faith that you had done your due diligence to get a grinder pump that was going to work for 20 years, not something that fails within six years. And you've all heard the horror stories that the people in this town with the grinder pumps have experienced. Um, you know, we believe the town was doing right by us by doing this solution. We worked with the town to do what you said was right. And I think we're all finding that these grinder pumps were not so right and we're stuck with them. And, you know, that's why it's important for us that you make a vote tonight on this Amendment 25 and not withdraw it. And I do agree that the people in the condominiums should not have to pay for these grinder pumps. I mean, I know that's not in the warrant article and I know that's an implementation detail, but I, I wouldn't think that's right either. That's a kick in the butt for them. And, you know, I think the town's bigger than that and won't do that to you, so I, I don't think you should have to worry, but I, I'm not the decision maker. Anyway, so I, I'm hoping you all vote against this amendment and I'm, motion. And I'm also hoping that you'll take a good look at Article 25, that we'd all, we've all been hearing about these for over a year and a half, and that you vote for Article 25. Thank you.
Mr. Hadley?
Dave Hadley, Precinct 3. Uh, I think what we're trying to do here is give relief to the people that are having a problem. And I think maybe one of the reasons we never heard from all those other people is because they were not having a problem. But as time goes on, they're probably going to start having a problem and we're going to need to address this at some point. I think we've spent a lot of time and I think that the committee has done a good job. And, uh, I, I'd really like to see us, um, defeat this motion, go on with the main motion, uh, and give the people who are having the trouble the relief. I don't think this is a ton of money for, everybody's going to have to kick in. And I, I really do think that, um, you know, this would be, you know, a really, I think this would be a mistake. I think we need to go forward with the main motion and, um, and try to give the people the relief they need. Thank you.
Pam Armstrong?
Pam Armstrong, Precinct 3. I'd support Lori's motion. Um, I don't think they took into account all the grinder pumps in the community. I don't think they've took into account all the homes that have not been built, that could be built on lots that are zone residential. I don't think that they've considered anybody that has three units or more on a pump and what their ramifications to them are. Um, I know at Scotty Hollow, we replaced two pumps because we maintained two. We can't live with one breaking down. We had to go from grinder pumps to cutter pumps because grinder pumps weren't sufficient. They're more expensive. Um, I'm sure that there are other people that have multiple units on grinder pumps that may have also had to increase the type of pump they've used. So I don't think there's been enough information gathered. They've only looked at what they say, 529 homes, and not the overall amount of homes that would be, you know, included in this if we went forward, or all the other private paid-for grinder pumps or cutter pumps in the community that are not being included and that doesn't seem quite fair, that those people shouldn't be part of the study as well. So I would support Lori's motion.
Laura McQuiggin, Precinct 1. I'm hoping that this motion gets defeated and that Article 25 will get passed because, um, it really is not fair that this just gets keep, getting pushed forward and forward. Um, I think the sewer, um, committee made a grave error when they did these, um, grinder pumps and all in the... all in the, just to save some money. And it's really not fair for them. And I think Town Council, I'm glad that that person asked that question, because you answered the question. I know the wording is not perfect. I know that you said that the Sewer Committee, when it comes forward, if it gets passed, will get modified so that everything's legal, that it's all going to go forward, and that our questions that have been asked here will be answered, and it's all going to be okay. And, you know, everything will be, I'm sorry, I'm nervous here. The way that we want it to be, the way that we've asked it to sound going forward. I know that the committee has done a really good job, and I don't, I feel like the questions that were asked, that the Sewer Committee might not have been as forthcoming as they could have been. And that's why the numbers aren't as great as they could be, and they never will be, until we know for sure, from the company and from everybody that comes forward and says, "Okay, this is how much we can charge." But it's not fair to the people who have paid, and the betterment fee has nothing to do with it, reciprocity or not, because other people who have gotten Town Sewer have also had betterment fees paid. Some have, some haven't. It's just something that we owe them, because they have so many other costs right now that it's not their fault. It's not something that they asked for. It's not something that you would ask for if you were required to put in grinder pumps. So I hope that you defeat this and pass the article.
Just remind everybody, we're under discussion and debate for the motion to commit, and try and keep the scope of your debate to the motion and not Article 25. Ms. Uter.
Karen Uteck, Precinct 5. I'd like to move the question.
That is a privileged motion.
Yeah. It's not debatable. Two thirds.
Town meeting time. It is a privileged motion. It is not debatable. It's going to require two-thirds vote.
So to move the question is basically a...
Point of information, can you restate what we're voting on?
At this time, we would be voting on Ms. Myers' motion to commit Article...
Oh, I thought she was a...
This is to move the question to end the debate on Ms. Myers' motion to commit. This is, requires a two-thirds majority.
And here we go. I think we've sort of reached the point, I'm guessing, that a town meeting representative will have an opinion, one way or the other, on Article 25. And I know there's going to be a lot of people lining up for debate. I think what you're going to see is a certain eagerness to get the vote done and out of the way and move on to some of the other articles. Not that people's experiences, which I'm sure we're going to hear many of, aren't valid, but it is, it's not, I think, a situation that is going to lend itself to swaying the opinions of the town meeting members.
Moderator recognizes that the motion moved the question passes, so we're going to go right into the vote. And I would remind you that we're still on the very first article of the evening, and we have a lot to go, so keep that in mind as we move forward. So at this time, we now have a vote on the motion to commit Article 25 to next year's annual Spring Town Meeting. It requires a simple majority.
One would be yes, in favor of committing to next spring. No would be to deal with Article 25 this evening.
Looks like this is going to be defeated and going to be talking, bringing the Article 25 debate to a conclusion, to a culmination, to a crescendo. Motion pretty clearly fails to gain the majority needed, so Article 25 will still be on the floor.
The motion to commit is defeated.
The applause that you're hearing is from the citizens in the back who are not town meeting members, presumably many of them in the Sewer Fairness Alliance.
Yep.
So now we're, we should be continuing, beginning debate on Article 25.
So we are now back in the discussion and debate period of Article 25. Ms. Logan?
Beth Logan, Precinct 3. Mr. Moderator, I'd like the Finance Committee to give some kind of explanation on how they voted and to understand whether or not the amendments address any of their issues. Thank you.
Overall, we had one extension on the committee, and the other members, and please correct me if I'm wrong, felt that we did not have enough information so far as the costs, the more specific cost to each household involved. I don't know how the other committee members feel about a long-term future study, but I think it would be better personally to have more information than we have now. But so far as the entire committee voting on the article as in the warrant book, we just did not have enough specific cost financial information.
Mr. Moderator, Doug Bruce, Precinct 9. I'd like at this time to submit an amendment to Article 25.
All right. The moderator has already received the written motion to amend, which is going to request a sunset clause, and I have provided to Town Council, who has already submitted it to the manager. We're going to try and get that up on the screen as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
So a new wrinkle, a sunset clause. And what this means is that the town's obligation to maintain these grinder pumps would end at some point in the future. In other words, part of the concern here, on the part of the Finance Committee, as you just heard, is that if we agree, if Town Meeting agrees that the town should take over the maintenance of these pumps, that's forever. And in that time, many of these homes that have these grinder pumps will be sold, they will change hands, and so forth, and so the original owners will be, will no longer be involved. What a sunset provision will do is put a limit on the time period during which the town will be responsible for the maintenance. It could be five years, it could be 10 years, but it will be some, some limit to the town's obligation, after which the responsibility for the maintenance of the pumps will revert to the homeowners. I didn't hear whether or not the, the motion involves a very specific sunset clause. I'm actually going to lean over here and see.
I'll remind the body that the motion to amend is a debatable motion. It too will require a simple majority. Once they have it typed up on the screen, we'll be able to have debate on the amendment. And first, we'll have to hear from the proponent of the motion to amend and have him explain it, so, Mr. Bruce, don't go too far.
And by virtue of my sort of position up here in front, near where all of the town officials are sitting, I can tell you that after this amendment is addressed and dealt with, there is another one yet waiting. One of the things that is new is, you know, these amendments have to be written in written form. You can't just say, "I move, I want to amend to make this happen or that happen." They have to be submitted in writing. And there's a new form that's being used for the first time at this meeting that makes multiple copies, so that everyone who needs to have the exact wording...
It is.
...will have one of those copies. So right now, we're talking about the motion to amend that would put in the sunset clause.
Wow, clearly it was failing somehow. That's terrible.
I think the sunset clause, as I can read it, would be triggered once the property is sold. In other words, it's not a fixed time. It's actually, it has to do with the ownership of the property, so that once, say, you had a home with one of the grinder pumps, you sold it, the new owner would not benefit from this provision. Over time, the town would get out of the grinder pump business, because all the homes will have been sold. We'll see where that goes. Town Council from Copelman and Page has been very busy tonight, as he was also on Monday. And it's, it's useful to have that sort of instant feedback. As I understand, the costs, as they were estimated by the Grinder Pump Study Committee, the approximate cost per year to maintain these pumps in their current state is about $150,000. There are roughly 500 grinder pumps, so that's an estimated cost of about, I'm doing the math in my head here, 500, $150,000, $300, $3,000 per year per household. And so, the pumps, the cost of that, that $150,000 would be divided among the other 11,000, that's the number I believe I heard, homeowners in town, so that the, the cost would be relatively minor, like $15 per household per year. But essentially, what is, the, those homes with the grinder pumps are asking the rest of the town to bear the cost of maintaining the grinder pumps in their homes.
All right. As you can see, we now have Mr. Bruce's...
So we're about to go back to the, to the amendment, or the motion for an amendment?
Projected up on the screen in the yellow, my understanding is Mr. Bruce's amendment. Mr. Bruce is at the microphone, and at this time, I'll have him explain the motion. Uh, the motion to amend, excuse me. Mr. Bruce?
I'm sorry, could we make that a little bigger on the screen? What I'd like to do is read it as written, and then I'll provide my justification and explanation afterwards.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, begin.
Yes.
"This bylaw shall apply to the property owner on the effective date of the bylaw. This bylaw shall not apply to subsequent property owners of existing grinder pump installations. The bylaw shall not apply to new construction after the date of enactment." That's simply the amendment. It doesn't strike any language, it just adds those two paragraphs. And my reasoning behind this, when I asked of the study committee earlier, they had indicated that any sort of sunset clause had not been included in the study committee discussions. I worry about the town's commitment in perpetuity and would like to try and limit that. I have heard some very compelling stories tonight from residents about their grinder pump issues, and I am totally in support of the idea of making those residents whole. And I want to do that. But I also want to limit the town's liability by ensuring that this doesn't go on for ever, ever and ever. The study committee indicated that since the sewer syst, since grinder pumps were installed, there's already been a 25% turnover rate in those property owners. So in the few years, it's been maybe 10 years since the first grinder pump was installed, we've already seen 25% turnover. That means that the town's financial commitment would have already been reduced by 25%. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for considering.
At this time, we're now in debate on the motion to amend Article 25. As I indicated before, this requires a simple majority. Mr. DeSilvio?
Nick DeSilvio, Precinct 5. The gentleman that just spoke used the word fairness. Where do you see the fairness? The existing property owners will have equity value loss in their homes, because going forward, they're not going to be able to sell it at the value that it is, the home is, because of this lost hair. It all comes down to fairness. That's, we're trying to be fair here, and I think that's what the objective is.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the motion to amend?
Glenn Thorin, Precinct 5. At first, I thought this might be a good motion, but I've thought about it some more. And so I would oppose this particular motion in preparation for yet another amendment that I would offer forward, that this amendment, that this main motion be applied for a period of five years. So I'm going to vote against this motion and prepare an amendment to follow this one.
Just so you're aware, there is already an amendment in the queue between you and Mr. Bruce.
I didn't, I didn't know that, but if it says the same thing as mine, I'm...
No, I, we just, we just received, so. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on the motion to amend Article 25 that is currently on the screen?
Peggy Dunn, Precinct 1. Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask a question of General Counsel.
It's kind of a point of order.
There you go. What is the legality of this amendment? It seems strange to me that someone, we can be supporting a grinder pump in someone's home, but if they go to sell it to someone else, and that other person's going to buy it, the support goes away. Is, can we do that?
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, it's now time for me to give my speech.
Okay.
Which is, I've given it before. I think it's a dangerous, well, I think making amendments to bylaws that are complicated on the fly on Town Meeting Floor is generally a very bad idea.
Thank you.
But in this case, that won't stop more amendments from being offered. You see Glenn Thorin up there offering one. There's already another one in queue, and so the next one is about to be introduced.
She's number two.
Okay, number two. Article 25.
Inaction in relation there, too.
No, because, no, 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 because you can't...
It's discriminatory.
Mr. Moderator. Mr. ...
This is Glenn Thorin. He's number, he's number three.
We've got two more nights.
Six hours.
The motions keep coming in faster, so we have to dock it them in in order, so...
Do we have a motion?
We're still under the motion, discussion on the motion to amend. This is Mr. Bruce's motion to amend for the purposes of a sunset clause. So we're still in the discussion and debate section of the motion to amend to add the sunset clause as proposed by Mr. Bruce. Mr. Latina?
Brian Latina, Precinct 4. Mr. Moderator, I just heard the town attorney say that it was dangerous to amend an article on Town Meeting Floor, yet I have my book that was sent to me and pre-Town Meeting, this article has been scribbled all over since the beginning of this meeting. In fact, we spent 10 or 15 minutes striking out, changing colors, and all the rest. That is a dangerous thing to do on Town Meeting Floor after a committee met for over, for a year, to come up with these words that we're supposed to vote on. And I'm very concerned, heard the Town Meeting lawyers comment, that this is kind of dangerous. We don't know the dollars. We changed everything about that that was pre-written yesterday, this morning, this afternoon. We didn't even have a piece of paper out back for the Town Meeting members in here to read in complete form. I would agree that it is dangerous to look at this, this article. I'd lean towards the amendment here, but I think, I think we're setting, we're setting some risk to the town here. I would agree that it is dangerous to, um, look at this, this article. I, I, I'd lean towards the amendment here, but I think, I think we're setting, we're setting some risk to the town here.
Seeing and hearing no further discussion on Mr. Bruce's motion to amend, which is currently displayed on the screen before you, and I remind you, this is a simple majority. I would ask you at this time to cast your votes.
So again, this is a motion to amend Article Twenty-Five.
And again, one is in favor of the motion to amend, two is in opposition to defeat the motion to amend.
I think you can see that there's basically, uh, no support for this, this amendment. The real problem is that we don't know the costs. I mean, we, we can only estimate statistically what it's going to cost. Uh, the town would probably put the maintenance of these pumps out on a, on a contract bid, and-
Motion is defeated.
It's hard to know what that will cost us.
Discussion and debate on Article Twenty-Five, however, right before we started, Ms. Armstrong got to the podium and handed in her motion to amend. And we have passed that over. Perhaps you can start speaking to the body and telling us what your motion to amend Article Twenty-Five is about.
Let's get it up on the screen.
My motion to amend is for any private residential property of three units or more that are paying privately for their grinder pumps are exempt from any flat fee increase that the town is going to charge.
Can I, can I speak to this?
Town Council wishes to address this.
Mr. Moderator, through, through you to the previous speaker, um, I, I have concerns with this amendment because it would create a rate structure that is not uniform. And, uh, I would be concerned that, uh, it would not withstand a legal challenge because the general laws require that, uh, sewer user fees be just and equitable, and that has generally been, been interpreted to mean there's one sewer rate. You can obviously charge a different rate for, for different broad categories of users and base it on volume, but to merely exempt a class from the sewer rate, I fear would be susceptible to a legal challenge.
I was referencing a flat rate fee that the commission said they were going to charge versus a sewer rate change?
May I? Uh, well, Mr. Moderator, that, as I said earlier, um, and the, the other reason why I'm concerned about this, um, amendment is, is because it is the DPW department that has the, is the sewer authority in the town, and under the general laws, it's the sewer authority that can set sewer rates, not town meeting. So that's a problem. You know, the way I look at this is whether it's sixteen dollars, or eighteen dollars, or twenty dollars, or five dollars, that would essentially be an increase in the sewer rate that would be applied to all users. This amendment seeks to provide a class of exemptions from a, the sewer rate that would normally apply, and I do not, I would be concerned whether that would withstand a legal challenge.
So I have a question. The commission had said that it's not a sewer rate change, it's a flat rate that would be added to the bill. Is that not correct?
I don't, that's a difference without a distinction, as far as I'm concerned.
This is now debate on Ms. Armstrong's motion to amend Article Twenty-Five, which is now highlighted in the yellow.
So, Mr. Moderator, Dave Dubinsky, Precinct Two.
Yes.
May I follow up on the question that was just answered, asked, uh, asked?
I believe you can ask a question in debate, so yes.
Thanks. Through you to Town Council. I, I guess I am begging the question, but, um, if there are sewer rates, and then there is this exceptional set of circumstances, uh, under which a portion of the owners within the town are going to reap a benefit through which the entire town is going to support financially. But there is also another segment of the community representing homeowners who are already individually fiduciarily responsible for payment of their own grinder pumps and associated costs for purchase and maintenance. And then they would, if this were enacted, they would, in reality, not in effect, in reality, they would not only be paying to maintain, purchase and maintain their own grinder pumps, but have an additional assessment over and above that which they're already paying. I don't see why there wouldn't be the basis for a distinction, uh, based on the prevailing, uh, rules and regulations and, and legal concerns that you've expressed.
Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, I'm going to respectfully disagree. But again, this is, um, you know, I'm trying to, I, I'm trying to provide you with the, the best advice I can based upon my experience dealing with this issue over many years, and I do have a concern, uh, that you are essentially setting up a different, a two-tiered, if you will, rate structure, and, and I'm not sure that would withstand a legal challenge. I would also point out that this amendment says any residential property of three or more units. What does that mean? Are these condominiums? Is the intent here to, um, to provide relief to individual units in a condominium, or are we talking about residential dwellings? I don't know.
These are individual, I'm talk, I'm talking about individual units within a condominium, uh, development.
Well, with, with all due respect, what you're talking about and what's written may not be the same thing, so that's my concern. But I think my primary concern here is exempting a class of, of, um, exempting a class of property owners from a portion of the sewer rate, and I think that's problematic.
Yeah, I want to support these people, but I can't put my constituents in double jeopardy. Thank you.
Mr. Hadley?
Dave Hadley, Precinct Three. I think we're kind of losing the translation of this in the sense that pretty much everybody's sewerage, well, I, I think an overwhelming majority of the people's sewerage has to be pumped somehow, and we're talking about people in single-family homes, or two-family or whatever, um, as opposed to, you know, a multi-family complex of, you know, nine hundred units or something. I just hate to see this, this article get dragged down because of something that's not really pertinent to what we're trying to fix. So I would hope that we could, uh, get more focused on the article itself.
Dave Dubinsky, Precinct Two. Just as a follow-up to the previous speaker, I am specifically talking about a community in which there are single-family homes, duplexes, triples, and quads. There are no owners of, of, members of our community who live in an, an environment that exceeds a four-unit building. This is not a high-rise with three or four hundred apartments that have been converted to, uh, condominiums. These are townhomes, okay? Just want to make sure everybody has a clear perspective.
Thank you.
Ms. Spence?
Jan Spence, Precinct Two. Just as a point of clarification, these are townhomes in Williamsburg. We each pay an individual sewer bill. It's not a condominium bill. Each home receives its own separate sewer bill. Thank you.
Mr. Newcomb?
Tom Newcomb, Precinct Nine. Uh, Mr. Moderator, just, uh, seems to be some confusion because what's up on the screen, I think, includes some of the language that was, uh, taken out, uh, originally.
It does, she's right.
Because I thought that there was language that was stricken, that referred to, that it would be operated and maintained and serviced at-
Duly noted. What, what, I, I now see what you're saying. This was the original Article Twenty-Five, not reflecting the amended language, so there should be, um, language changed in the second paragraph. You are correct. That I think is, just a slide. What we're focusing on, though, is what's in the yellow, and if, if it's passed, I'll ensure that it's added to the appropriate screen. Yes, duly noted.
John Plunkett, Precinct Four. With all due respect to the previous speakers, the way this is written makes no mention of condos, individual units. What they mean it to be seems to me to be completely different than what's up there. Up there is three or more units, and as far as I'm concerned, that could, the sky's the limit, could go as high, uh, as you could see. So, uh, I think they would either need to have a clearer amendment that specifies what they are, are seeking to have covered. I would recommend strongly against this amendment.
Dan Plore, Precinct Seven. I motion to move the question.
Move the question is a privileged motion. It's not debatable. It's going to require a two-thirds vote. I remind everybody all, we're, we're moving the question at this time so that we can end debate on Ms. Armstrong's motion to amend. Vote one, if you're in favor of moving the question. Vote two, if you wish to continue debate.
An interesting, uh, this is Kelly B. for Chelmsford Telemedia, an interesting aspect of this electronic voting system is that even when it's patently clear what the outcome of the vote is, the timer requires it to go for thirty-five seconds. You can see in the upper left-hand corner.
Moderator recognizes a two-thirds vote. At this point now, we're going to move directly to the vote on Ms. Armstrong's amendment. I remind you that that is a majority vote. You'd be voting only on the language that is highlighted in the yellow. If you're in favor of the amendment, I would ask that you vote no, vote one. Vote two, if you're opposed to the amendment, and three to abstain.
So this is the, uh, this is the amendment that would provide relief for those property owners who, on their own, have installed grinder pumps. If, all else being left, uh, as, as the Grinder Pump Study Committee put forward, they would be, in addition to paying for their own grinder pumps, they would be, they would be, uh, tax-dated, surcharged to help pay for those people-
We will now revert back to discussion and debate on the main article. However, Mr. Thorne had submitted his motion to amend. I'm not sure if, um-
And now we have-
We have that yet to go on the screen, but in the interim.
Yet another amendment, this one offered by Glenn Thorne.
You'd like to step to the microphone and explain your motion to amend to the body?
Glenn Thorne, Precinct Five. I would like to ask, uh, Chairman of the Committee, Tom, or, or anybody from the Sewer Fairness Alliance to, um, share a few thoughts on the amendment here. My amendment is, is simply this. It's a simple amendment, um, is that we pass Article Twenty-Five with a five-year time limit. That way, we'll have time to collect our own statistical data on what it costs to maintain those pumps in Chelmsford, and then after five years, it would take another vote of the town meeting to extend this particular process beyond that time. We would not be able to continue to do those repairs beyond the five-year limit, but I think it's going to take a couple of years to get the system set up and in place. We'll know how much it is additional to the sewer users. It may be ten dollars, it may be twenty, it may be thirty, I don't know. Uh, my numbers suggest it's towards the lower side, and it would be able to put at least the people that have the issues with the grinder pumps right now in a stable place where they can rely on the town to repair those for a number of years, and at that time, we can look at the statistics for having done those repairs and maintain those pumps as part of the town-wide sewer enterprise and make a decision at that point moving forward whether we wish to continue to do so. And the reason why I invite, uh, any member of the committee up here to express their opinion on it is because I think it's a good compromise to move forward and be able to get those numbers that some people are looking for by our own experience. And I believe that having a deadline on the amount of years that we would be doing this allows us to take a look at that point in time whether we would continue this in perpetuity or for another five years as we move forward.
We are now in discussion and debate of Mr. Thorne's motion to amend Article Twenty-Five. Ms. Trish?
Trisha Duris, Precinct One. Mr. Moderator, I am opposed to this amendment. Uh, I think that if we need more data, we should get the data first, then bring it back and vote on a, a solid dollar amount.
Mr. Gilroy?
Mr. Moderator to, uh, Mr. Thorne. Speaking for myself, but not for the total committee, it would seem to me that this would be probably a good idea, but I think the fact is that we will be gathering data every year based upon the repairs that are made throughout the town. To look at this in another five years, bringing it back to town meeting, we may have all new members here, who knows? And we have, may have to go through this whole process again. If the body thinks that it's a good idea, I, I applaud you, but I think that the, right now, I think that we're, we're getting ourselves wrapped up in our underwear, and I think we should, we should probably proceed to the amendment and vote for it because this is going to go on forever.
Anybody else wishing to speak?
Peggy Dunn, Precinct One. I, I'm not concerned about his underwear. No, I, I would be opposed to this amendment because I think it puts the people who are grinder pump, uh, owners right now in limbo for five years. Say, in two years' time, they wanted to sell their house, but they have to tell the people that want to buy it, well, look, they're being supported for the next three years, but after that, we don't know what's going to happen. I, I just think it's a, a, an unsound situation. Thank you.
Mr. De Silvio?
Nick De Silvio, Precinct Five. With all due respect to the previous speaker, I understand, I understand what his objective is in trying to, um, protect the town as well as trying to support the constituents that have these issues. The problem is, is these constituents, to be honest with you, you know, had to bear the burden of, of these grinder pumps, uh, and bear that burden because we, as an organization, as a town, decided that, you know, we didn't want to spend extra money to dig deeper or do whatever had to be done to do it properly. Okay? That, that was, that, that's really the reason why we're here today. And, and if you really think about that, so, so our objective here is to wait five years, and if it costs too much money, then we're going to tell them, too bad, you're on your own. Is that what the objective is? I, I just don't see where that's fair. I, I just don't. I, I'm against this.
Mr. Moderator, Glenn Thorne, Precinct Five. I withdraw the amendment.
So that means we might actually get to the debate on Article Twenty-Five.
Just want to clarify. So upon Mr. Thorne's withdrawal, we will be now back on discussion and debate of the main article that was previously presented. No amendments at this time, and before I take Mr. Iliopolis's, uh, comments on the discussion and debate, I will remind everybody, we're just about eleven o'clock. We will not be taking any other new business this evening unless somebody, when we finish this, wants to entertain a motion to extend, and I don't think that's going to happen. But we have a lot of people, I anticipate, want to speak. We've already heard a lot of debates, so as we move forward, be mindful of the hour, be mindful of the other folks here who want to get their words out, and just try not to be- be too repetitive. With that, Mr. Iliopoulos.
I'm Mr. Moderator, Philip Iliopoulos, Precinct Five. I'd like to move the question.
Moving the question is a privileged motion. It is not debatable. Again... I sort of saw the twinkle in Phil Iliopoulos's eyes when he went up to the microphone. Dennis Reddy had the mantle for many years of moving the question when debate got too long. Having served with Mr. Mead on the Marcom, he is correct, and I also realize that we have been here for three and a half hours, and I've heard a lot of similar debate. I see two people in line at the moment. I will take the next two speakers, and I'll see what happens after that, and then I might poll the audience for a renewed motion to move the question. Mr. Doolan?
Leonard Doolan, Precinct Seven. I've agonized over this thing for a couple of weeks, really, and I've gone back and forth, but I, I just cannot get over the fairness for all of the parties included, and that means all of them. I sympathize with the people who have these grinder pumps. That's a burden that's unfortunate. Nevertheless, I'm, I'm for the article, but the one thing that bothered me about this whole presentation, part of the information, is the fact that the people who got the grinder pumps got concessions from the town, to the town of two, the point of $2,700,000 worth. And it bothers me that a group of people who aren't identified and who do not choose to take responsibility for it have said, "There will be no reciprocity. It will not be going." They can't be asked to pay for what they had received that really is a benefit that came to them at the expense of everybody else. I, I think it's important to get back to the point as early, as easily as we can, to start off from some point of neutrality or someplace in the middle so that everybody is taken care of. We get into the discussion of whether or not we've got all of the costs, and we know what this is going to cost. I fear, as I listen to all of this for the last three hours, that this is going to be our big dig. This thing is, you know, and it finally hits us, and I'm convinced that some of the low estimates that I hear are really not very realistic. I think there's no way for this thing to go but up in terms of the cost, but nevertheless, it's part of our commitment to sewer the whole town and to do it, whether we did it the right way or the wrong way, it's, it's already been done. So, I say, I'm for this, but I want to make a, an amendment that says, in effect, "The funds received by grinder pump owners designated as mitigation, as determined by the town accountant, shall be billed to the homeowner with the grinder pump, with grinder pumps upon implementation of this article." And I think that an article should be voted through, but with this amendment to kind of clear the air and take the advantage away from one group at the expense of another.
I, I think it's... I'm going to ask Town Council, just my experience here is I'm not sure if this is beyond the scope of the article, because typically we act in relation thereto, Mr. Doolan, but I'll submit it to Town Council, take his opinion.
So, I did not see that one coming. That's a... Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. I would agree that, at least in my opinion, although it's your, it's your final call, I think this is beyond the scope. I don't think that there was any warning to the voters that there would be an obligation to repay this quote-unquote mitigation money. And secondly, I don't, I don't know how the town can actually enforce such a requirement. As I indicated earlier, I have grave doubts as to whether the town could reassess, do any reassessments based upon a policy decision that was made at the time that the sewers were installed. So, I think this goes beyond the scope of the warrant article, and I think it's of questionable legality. And not to mention the fact, as they're sitting up there discussing it, that a quarter of the homes who had these grinder pumps originally installed have gone to new owners, and so, that would require the new owners of these homes to reimburse the town for the mitigation money that the previous owners enjoyed.
I'm going to declare this out of order, beyond the scope. As you well know, at the bottom of most of the articles, it says, "Act in relation thereto," as Town Council indicated. We would have to give proper notice to most of the people that are impacted by this, and I don't think it's appropriate at this time to advance this. So, I'm not going to, not going to entertain the motion to amend.
So, just a reminder, Phil Iliopoulos had moved...
We are still under discussion and debate. Mr. Solinch?
Precinct Seven, Andy Solinch. I listened to what Town Council said, and it was talked about before, that bylaws on the fly are concerned. My concern is, where is the official copy of this article? I don't have it. Does the council have it? Do you have it?
It's my understanding that the official wording of Article 25 as presented on the screen has been provided to the town clerk.
Is this, is that right? You have it in writing or you have it on your PC? So, there's no written document? The article is very confusing, and when I leave this, I won't be able to explain exactly what it is that we passed, if we pass it. And so, I'm asking this question. You do have one cut, and that is the, going to be the official copy? That we haven't unfortunately seen, even though, you know, you've done three or four months of excellent work, in the last two or three days, in the last half a day, there are changes. So, it's not as secure and firm as we're led to believe. And that's why I worked for, for the amendment. I think more work on it, we can bring it up again, and it will be successful. But right now, I will vote against this.
Ms. Myers?
I'd like to hear from the Board of Selectmen as to why they voted in favor of this article.
Well, I, I guess I'll speak for the three of us, and you can chime in, George and Bob, if you, you feel any different. The reason I voted in favor of it is, you know, based on the committee's unanimous vote, except for Peggy Dunn had abstained. It appeared that they had done a very comprehensive analysis. They even had a member of the DPW on the, on the committee. But in full disclosure, I was on an email chain today at 4:00 by, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, he's the superintendent of the DPW, Michael, and he provided, again, today, just a few hours before town meeting, he provided a, I think it was like a five-page report that had very different numbers. And I think it's fair to this entire town meeting that everyone hears that report.
I think Janet summed it up pretty well. I, I attended every meeting. I was one of the, I was a liaison to the committee, and I think that, I, I think that everybody should be involved in this. I agree with the people on the larger units, more than three units. I know we had to start someplace. This is tearing the town apart, and it shouldn't be. And I don't think a lot of people really understand the whole complexity of this whole, of, of the, the last 20 years of the sewer, the sewer project. Some people didn't get an edge. I mean, the town did benefit a little by people using grinder pumps because we didn't have enough money to do the, we didn't have enough money to put them on the gravity system. And I do believe that the people in the complexes like Scotty Hollow and Williamsburg and places like that, over the period of time and a little bit of work, they all paid their bills, and we could work out a system to work with them, too. This probably is going to take a little bit of time, but I think if we keep putting it off, we're never going to get it finished. So, I'm just hoping that we, we get the ball rolling somehow and, and continue until everybody, as many people can, as happy as can be possible. I mean, it's not possible to get everybody happy, happy. I mean, I know the people on the sewer commission over the years did a fantastic job. They kept running into different financial difficulties, et cetera. There's nobody to blame here. We have a situation. We're a great town, and I think we all have to come together, come to a solution, work it out, and settle this thing. Thank you.
Last year this time, oh, actually, it was six months ago, when this first came before us, I was vehemently opposed to it. As a result of attending many meetings with the sewer grinder pump people, I learned a great deal that I didn't know last time we took up this article. I'm not totally happy with what we're coming up with, but I think we can refine it with the regulations, and I would like to see, as George said, I'd like to see some support given to the condos as well, because I know all the condos had to pay betterment fees and install fees and all this other stuff, and it gets, in some cases, gets billed as part of their common area charge, and in other cases, we heard tonight, Williamsburg gets a separate bill for every single person that's on it. So, I'm supporting it. It's not perfect, but I think we have to do something.
Tom Newcomb, Precinct Nine. I'll try and be very brief. I've talked to a lot of people in my precinct, a lot of people in town about this. There's a lot of different issues, a lot of concerns, concerns over the, the fact that it is a blanket over new, not just covering existing pumps, but, but new pumps, so therefore, if somebody has a piece of land that otherwise may not have been buildable, that they can now build on because of sewer, that the town's going to be on the hook for that. So, it is very much an open-ended blank check for us. The Finance Committee's brought up concerns, and even standing here in line to speak, my concerns are even greater because now we're talking about, we've, at the last minute, we're hearing about a report from the DPW that the cost figures that we've been provided tonight are not accurate, but we haven't really been given that information. And also, we get, you talk about, well, maybe we can expand this through regulation. Well, if, if that's not what, what we're voting on tonight, then that's not what we should doing it, we should be doing. And I think that there is not enough information being provided to this body in order to be able to really, to make an informed decision, as well as we've got different language getting thrown around, and Town Council has said that he does not like that, and we've got something that's been, was not presented to us until tonight. And, I'm going to go with Town Council when they say that we shouldn't be doing this on the fly. Thank you.
Mr. Reddy?
Joe Reddy, Precinct One. I'd like to move the question.
In fairness to Mr. Iliopoulos, I just want to say, whether you realize it or not, when he moved the question, I don't think we had had any actual debate because we had did over an hour worth of motions to amend, so I wanted to hear from just a few people. But now, I would say that it is an appropriate question to, to move the question at this time. It is a privileged motion. It is not debatable. It requires a two-thirds majority. It's on the motion to move the question on the main article, Article 25. Essentially, it would be ending all further debate. I'd ask you to vote one if you're in favor of moving the question, two if you're opposed, three if you wish to abstain. We will now, we're about to be moving into the vote on Article 25. Before we do, I'd like to remind you, again, to pick up your tables on your way out. I don't know if Moderator Curlin's going to come back, but I think it would be appropriate after the vote for someone to make a motion to adjourn. But, so, we will now be voting on the main article, Article 25. If you're in favor of Article 25, vote one for yes. If you're opposed, two for no, three for extensions. And I remind you, this is a majority... I think this is going to be a very close vote. Only requires a simple majority. I wouldn't be surprised to see some votes switch. It's a general bylaw, Town Council.
Just had a point of order shouted from the floor.
Moderator recognizes that Article 25 has passed.
Karen Utek, Precinct Five. I motion to adjourn.
Until a specific date and time, please.
Until Monday night at 7:30.
I have a motion to adjourn to Monday at 7:30. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and, and thanks to, to Michael McCall for giving me an evening off.
You've done a great job. You really did.
Well, this is Kelly B for Chelmsford Telemedia. We are here at 11:15, and we got through one article tonight. That was Article 25, having to do with the... A while ago, and it is, it is not one that has a clean solution. There, we recognize, I think everyone here recognizes that there is a, there are certain flaws in, in precision and other aspects to this bylaw that, that will need to be ironed out, not least of which is the cost and what will happen in terms of finding all the people who have the grinder pumps. That's still not known yet. But as George Dixon pointed out, that it's really time for the community to come together on this. His words, "This is an issue that has been tearing the community apart," and so, we are, we are moving forward. I also need to, to remind you of something that John Giorgio, our Town Council, said very early in the evening, which was, "Can I go home now?" He certainly was put on the spot numerous times tonight. So, we have still, by my count, let's see, we've gone through nine out of the 26 of motions, articles on the warrant, so we still have most of it to go. It would be, I would be very surprised if we get through with them all on Monday night. Within possibility, maybe we'll see you then and the following Thursday night. So, thank you for staying with us. I hope you found this informative. For all of us here at Chelmsford Telemedia, and all of the town meeting representatives, on their behalf, we want to thank you for watching. We'll see you on Monday night. Good night. Good night.